I would like to call for the order out January 2021, Commissioner Reed. At this time, we will ask Commissioner Repose to give a notification and Commissioner Walker to give us an update.
Dear Lord, we thank you for giving us this opportunity to come together to do the business of people of Old Trafford County. As we deliberate tonight, the various decisions that come before us, give us the wisdom and discernment to make decisions that are pleasing to you. And in your son's name, we ask all this in the Lord's name, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Jesus Christ, high flag.
High flag. The religion is unified in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will ask if anyone has any conflict of interest. Hearing none, we will move forward. Our next item is the approval of tonight's agenda. Any additions or deletions? Commissioner Richardson.
I'd like to have the issue of exercising jail to the agenda tonight.
Is that for discussion?
For discussion.
We'll make that item number three? No. One, two, three, four. What it says, one, two, and then one, two. So anyway, it'll be the last item under discussion.
Okay.
Just under N. Any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this evening's agenda, raise your right hand. Now, all in favor. This time, we'll have our public comments. Are there any public comments? We have no public comments, so we will move further to the legislative updates from our elected officials. And I do not see any elected officials here, so we will continue on with our agenda. The next item is an item for discussion. An NC DOT is Preston Hunter or Jeff Cannabis here. Approach the podium and identify yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jeff Cannabis. I work for the Department of Transportation. I'm the project development engineer. And so Brian contacted us and wanted to know, said that y'all had some questions or concerns about two of the safety projects that we've been working on, namely, there's one that's basically along the front of the Beaufort Community College, and that's one we've been working on since 2018, I think when we first brought that to y'all. That one is currently paused from our financial issues that we've had, some pre-COVID, but then COVID really exacerbated it. Recently, right before Christmas, we, some of these safety projects have started, been able to start working on again. So we're, hopefully that that'll, that'll transition into letting us work on this one in the near future. That's kind of the indication we got. We don't have a timeframe of when we would actually get to start working on it again. The plans are pretty much complete. We are in the right-of-way phase. There's two parcels that still remain to be acquired, or just pieces of the parcel. And then, once, once that's complete, we can go to construction. So that's the first project. Does anybody have any questions on that one?
Okay, you can continue.
Okay. The second project is a roundabout, just down the road from that, on 264 at the intersection of 32. And that one also is currently paused. We've only got one parcel. That one needs right-of-way on that one. So basically, we're just waiting on the funding to be freed up so that we can go to work on that, acquire the necessary right-of-way, and then we can go to construction. The current dates for both of those projects is to let in October of 2022, but that, that could move up if the funding is available. Or it could slide back, but from all indications, we wouldn't have to slide that back. It would just be moving it up if possible. Is there any questions on that one?
Any Commissioner have any concerns or questions? Commissioner Repose.
Do you have any update on the bridge on 17 business?
The one over the railroad track?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Well, I got a parcel update. That one is not being developed in the division. That's a central, central project that's been managed. It is scheduled for let in March, but we have a meeting on Wednesday. There's extensive utility issues out there. You can imagine utilities going under right-of-way and then a bridge as well. So we're having, they've had issues of, of how to keep the utilities active and actually build the bridge at the same time. If, if we can keep it on schedule, it'll be March will be a let, but that could slide a month or two, depending on what we find out this week.
Jeff, is, is that still going to be combined with the swing span rehab project? Okay, so it will essentially, again, isolate that section of, of area?
The way they're going to write the contract is they won't be able to completely close that section, except momentarily, I think, with, with, they have to open the swing spans every so often. And it'll be able to have to be some coordination with, with fire and rescue on that. Yeah, that's going to be a pretty impressive endeavor. I do have some good news for you. I always say, don't, don't bring bad without a little bit of good. So we do have some good news. Recently, we've had some, our resurfacing funds have been, been able to go and move forward. So we just let two projects in Beaufort County right before Christmas and awarded those. One of them is 264 out by the intersection with 12th Street, and it goes from there all the way to 32, close to six miles or so, I believe. Anyway, some mill and field, we'll actually be grinding up the top inch and a half of asphalt and then putting it, putting new surface back down. So that one was awarded to Rose Brothers. It's available mid-March when our resurfacing cranks back up. We haven't had a, a meeting with them to, for them to tell us when they anticipate starting, but it'll have to be done between March and November, this paving season. And then, the other one is on the 17 business, right here in town. That starts at 264 and it goes out to 17 bypass, so basically Carolina Avenue, five, five-lane section. And that was awarded to S.T. Wooton. And again, that's still in the same timeframe, March to November. And that'll be another mill and field where we'll actually be grinding up the old layer, top layer, and then putting back new asphalt.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Booth.
The projects that you're talking about on 264, the turnaround, turnabout, and the one in front of the college, were there, or have there been public hearings already for that? Would there be no more public hearings? Okay, thank you.
I just have one question for you. You may or may not be able to answer it. The continuation of the four-laning from Old Ford to Martin County, is there any update on that?
It, that one is managed in the division, but not in our division. It's in Division One. But I spoke to the, my counterpart there today, and it just was put on the move-forward list in November, and so they aren't able to move forward on it. Right now, the let date is December of next year, but that'll be, that's, that's what they're, they're shooting for right now. So hopefully about a year from now.
All right, thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Chairman. I want to pull the minutes from the last meeting, just for a vote.
Item 10.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what we will do. We will approve the consent agenda, and we'll go ahead and deal with the minutes.
That's fine. It's just for a vote, and I don't have any discussion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Five, one. Commissioner Richardson has asked for the minutes from the last meeting, that we have a vote on it. He said there is no discussion to be had, so all those in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your right hand.
I'll move, we approve minutes from the last meeting.
Now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed. I know he heard me, so he'll be on his way. Item I, the report from the Health Department.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. I gotta tell you this off because I cannot breathe with the mask on, while talking at the same time. So I wanted to go over the, the flu first real quick, because I know that people have asked me about that. This is a graph that I can, I'm able to show you, the flu impact in North Carolina. The big line is the COVID, and then the green line down there is the flu. So basically, no discernible flu is circulating in North Carolina, according to this graph. I have followed 143 tests in Beaufort County for flu, and for those, about 2.8% of those that have been done are, have been for flu. So there, there might be some in circulation, but it's not in large numbers right now. This is another way I'll follow the flu to, to show these numbers. Red is COVID, blue, which you can barely see, is a line between the red and the gray. That would be your flu numbers. And then, the gray is just, is neither COVID nor flu. So this is one of those things that, as we go through the flu season, you should be able to see the increase in flu numbers that way. So getting into COVID, for North Carolina, 570,111 confirmed cases. We're there at, this is as of 2:00 today, 6,941 deaths. Currently, 3,635 people have, are hospitalized, and the positivity rate for North Carolina right now is at 16.5%. The number, or the graph down at the bottom kind of shows the graph of cases since March up to present day. So you can see that we are, North Carolina-wise, on a increase. The Beaufort County numbers, right now, we've done a little over 29,000 tests. I'm estimating about 10% of those tests are repeats, which means I still have tested about 26,000, and I say, the Health Department is the only one, but done through all the medical facilities. About 26,000 tests have been done on residents, and 56%, that makes 56% of our population has tested at some time. We are at 2,864, that's 52 today, cases that we worked up as positive. We have 111 people total since the outbreak that have been hospitalized, and we currently have 19 in the hospital. And we've had 64 deaths. I have on here 63, but on the way over here, I got a death certificate for one more, so it's 64 deaths that we're at. Currently at 628 active cases, which is the highest we've been since the start of this. That makes about 1.3% of our population that is active at this time. And I'm following four outbreaks in long-term care facilities. They're all pretty minor with one or two cases, so it hasn't exploded in the, those Over the last 14 days, you can see how we compare to the rest of the state. You'll see that they have four categories, zero, 21 to 40, 41 to 60, and 61-plus. And almost all of North Carolina is in that 61-plus. We are actually at 120 per 10,000, so that's 562 cases over the last two weeks that we've The graph, the top graph showing the seven-day average, you can see over the last week that really a large increase that we've had, and I'm sure most of everybody is paying attention to the information that we send out daily, have seen that we went over one day 112, and we've hit almost 100 another day. So we are seeing quite a bit over the last two weeks. The bottom graph, however, is a little bit easier for me to kind of follow the trend, because I don't have that weekly spike to look at, but you can still see that we've had quite a bit of an increase over the last week, even off of that graph. So we are in the midst of a wily circulating COVID virus in Beaufort County. I've got another graph here that the state sends me, which I like to use also, because it shows the long-term care facilities in pink. So you can see that, even though we've had these huge numbers, it's not affecting the long-term care facilities like it did back in the July timeframe when we had a lot of, a lot of cases in the nursing homes. This just, graph shows the, the active cases, and again, that same spike over the last week, so we got more active cases going. And I think, once before, one of the Commissioners asked me, well, if we have 628 that we know of, how many out there we don't know of? And I always use, for every one, three others. And so at that rate, it looks like about 400 people right now in Beaufort County have COVID, active case of COVID. Quite a bit out there. This graph I use to kind of split up the different municipalities. So if you look at that over the last two weeks, you could see that the highest increases have been in Pine Town, Bell Haven, and Bath. All of them are right between 12 and 14 per thousand residents. Washington has flattened out over the last couple of weeks, but still sets at 11 per thousand. Chaco entities decreasing, and the rest of all the municipalities fall within 2 to 8 per thousand. So that graph kind of helps you look at your town and say what you're looking at. This, this kind of shows the impact on the hospital system. So for the Vida, and this is all for all the Vida hospitals, the graph shows the number of beds that are being used in light blue, so they're up to 180 beds that are being filled. And I think I heard it this morning, it is 190. And they've got 38 currently that are in ICU, and 21 on ventilators, and two of our residents are on a ventilator right now. Getting to testing, we did 106, 1,694 tests last week on residents, and 21.4% of those were positive. And, well, the state was 16.9, so we're a little bit ahead of the state on those numbers. Any questions about the demographics? Because if not, I'll get into this other information. Yes, sir.
What is, what is Vida's capacity? We keep.
As a whole, well, for COVID. I mean, we keep talking about, you know, the hospitals are being stretched. Are we being stretched? Well, I, I don't know specifically how much more they can handle, but they're getting close to the 90% capacity. But I don't know, they, when they talk about their capacity, they're talking about the capacity of their hospital system, but they have contingency plans to open up other locations if they have to. I don't, I'm not, I don't know what all those are, but they do have some capacity to expand. I don't know that that would include ventilators and stuff, though.
Commissioner Booth.
Jim, the numbers that come out every day are those actual numbers. There's been some, I have had some, some people ask me that, and I know it was bad information that they, they got. They said that when the day that we had 112, they said that there was rolling numbers. And, and they said it came from, from our Health Department, it said it was rolling numbers. But, but the day before that, there was 98 or 58 or something like that. So, so, so each day that we get the numbers, those are actual numbers. Is that correct?
Those are the numbers that we process. So we do testing, so we'll, that morning, we come in and we'll see from LabCorp how many we got from our test. So all those get processed. Then we get a list from Vida that they send to us for their positives, and we process them. And then we pull down from NC Ed's, which is the statewide system, the numbers that they have, because many times, the same people will be on NC Ed's. That's why they go last. And then, and then that's how many we process. So that's how many people we actually had positive on that day.
That's right. Well, I, I, I knew that was the answer, but I just wanted to get out so the people could hear themselves, because somebody's, somebody's, somebody's telling them, tell them that they are, are rolling numbers and.
We are not rolling numbers. Now, that doesn't mean that numbers don't roll from those other places to us, but we...
But they was, they was talking about, like, the day you had 98, and then the next day 112, they was thinking that you only had about seven, well, 98 to about seven, about 17 more cases that day, but that was an actual 112.
That's the actual number of cases that day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker.
Are your tests pretty accurate? Are you keeping up with how many false positives that you have?
Well, no, sir. We don't have the number of false positives. The false positive we worry about the most are from the, yeah, the rapid test, but we don't get that information. We just assume all PCR tests as positive, and we assume, or assume all the, the rapid test at presumptive positives. If they're symptomatic, the rapid test is much more accurate. If they are asymptomatic, that's when we have a little bit of concern. You should follow up a rapid, asymptomatic rapid with a PCR for validation.
Is loss of taste and smell still the number-one symptom?
No, I'd say that's, it may be one of the earliest ones, but I think the respiratory, you know, it could range from like a hay fever feeling all the way up to a really bad cold or flu bout. And of course, some people respond very negatively and have acute respiratory disease, which is why they get put on a ventilator.
Commissioner Richardson.
Among the people that have passed the deaths and morbidity in Beaufort County, all of, is it still the case that all of those people had a health, severe health symptom to go with the COVID?
As, well, I would have to say yes, are older, elder age, above 75. Some, some people over 75 may not have had a comorbidity, but they were older than 75.
So the people who have a comorbidity or, that are over 75, are the people who need to take measures to protect themselves?
As far as a protection for yourself, I would say, I would use probably 60 or 65.
60, okay.
But I think everybody needs to, because we've had some that are 55, and, you know, they had comorbidities, but they still need to be protected. And then, of course, our goal is to also protect those same people by herd immunity, which is getting as many people vaccinated as possible.
So it's still safe to say that the more, the people that are passing are, have a comorbidity, and that is the, the virus itself singularly has not killed anyone. It has contributed with comorbidities.
Well, I do think that the premise of what you're saying is correct, in that, yes, it's the older people that have comorbidities that seem to succumb to the virus.
Okay, thank you.
On those death certificates, does it say heart attack, or does it say COVID-19?
It might say both, but if it says COVID-19 on the cause of death, then I use it as a case.
You can continue, Jim.
Thank you. All right, so there's a lot of information to pass on about testing, because, like I mentioned, we're hitting 1,600-plus tests. And what I'm noticing is a lot of people getting tested that probably don't really need to. And I say that because they were a contact of a contact of a contact, and they feel worried, so they come and get tested. I'm not trying to tell people not to come, but there's really no need to come. And, you know, some people that are a contact of somebody casually, you probably wouldn't have to come get tested. If you get put on quarantine, if, if we call you and say, hey, you should be on 14 days quarantine, you know, we offer the test, but you don't necessarily have to come get tested. And the reason I say that is because you're on quarantine, even if it's positive or negative. So it'd probably be better if you started to feel sick during quarantine, then come get tested. But that being said, I'm trying to lay out to the public that we need to try to cut down on some of the testing, because we're starting to move up our operations for vaccination. So that being said, we're still going to test anybody that wants to be tested, but we're going to, we're cutting back on the hours at the Health Department, so my staff can get involved in the vaccinations. And, and I'm just asking that people, if y'all are, are on quarantine, are you worried? You know, the best time to get tested is if you start to feel some kind of symptoms or you know you were a close contact, and wait, wait your 14 days, regardless of getting tested. But that being said, these are the test sites for January that we have set up. So we're still going to do it at the Health Department, but we're going to go from 9:00 to 12:00 every day, that Business Day, we're going to be running there. On Mondays, over in Aurora, at the Fresh Anointing Church, between 11:00 and 5:00 o'clock, we'll have testing there. On Wednesdays, at the Wilkerson Center in Bell Haven, we'll have testing from 11:00 to 5:00. And on Fridays, in Washington, at Spring Garden Missionary Baptist Church, we'll have testing there. Same time, I'm sorry, I didn't put the times on there, but it's the same timeframe. So I still think there's plenty of opportunity for you to get tested if you need to, out there for everybody. And then you could also go to your provider. Your provider can do testing as, as well. Any questions about testing? So notification and contact tracing, this is another operation. So I say we got three operations, well, we got two right now that's going full-steady at the Health Department, testing, and then notification and contact tracing. So with notification and contact tracing, so for every positive, we have to interview them, and then we've got to interview whoever they came in contact with. And that's starting to become overwhelming to the Health Department right now, because we can't do 112 people a day and try to get their contacts and try to make contact with everybody. That, and the need to concentrate on vaccination in the future, I've simplified that a little bit. So when we contact a positive, and we're going to contact all positives, we're going to talk to them, and we're going to let them know that they need to stay out until the X date, you know, 10 days to their symptom, from their symptoms starting, but we're going to ask them to contact their contacts and tell them to stay quarantined. And then, then we're going to ask them, of all your contacts, who are you worried about? Like, do you have an elderly grandmother or something that you're worried about? And then we'll put that person down as a contact, and we'll follow them. So some of the other people that are kind of casual contacts, or they are not necessarily need to be contacted every day during this process, we're going to be cutting back on that. And again, we're going to have on the website a special link that, so you've been told you're a contact, and then people can go on there and kind of follow some instructions that way. The whole goal is to try to cut back as much as I can staffing with these first two operations, because we're moving forward with the third operation, which is the vaccine planning that we're doing. So the vaccine phases have begun. We have started doing vaccination at the Health Department. The Vida system and hospital systems have also started vaccinating. It's our goal to follow the state plan as much as possible, in part because, you know, they've, that's how they're allocating it to us, and so we have to try to follow their plan and, in order to receive more allocations. And so that's what we're going to try to do. I know we get lots of phone calls right now for the vaccine, and I wish I had more concrete answers sometimes, but it's a very difficult situation right now, because I don't know what my allocation of vaccine will be, any more than today's allocation, you know? So I'm trying to plan for things in the future, and I don't even know how much I'm going to have to do that. to have to do that. They tell me, a lot of times they'll tell me on Thursday what I'm going to get on Monday. So I do have at least those four days to try to plan things out. But that doesn't do any good for me planning out next week if I don't know till Thursday. But that being said, I'll try to explain everything here and let you know what we're trying to do about this. So we're in phase, uh, uh, 1B1. No, we're in phase 1A. I think that's, I think I made a mistake there, y'all. That's 1A that we're in. So, uh, that's 1A, not 1B1, okay? So we have about, uh, let's see. So that's healthcare workers fighting against COVID and working in long-term care facilities. So in essence, we're talking about nurses, physicians, respiratory technicians, dentists, EMT, healthcare workers, uh, people that work in, uh, long-term care, uh, long-term care facilities, people that are residents of long-term care facilities, they all fall in that 1B. We have about 2,000 people in our county that fall into that category. And, uh, so far in Beaufort County, as of today, that I know of, we've done 506 vaccinations. So 506 of the 2,000 have been vaccinated so far. I know that, um, the long-term care facilities are being, uh, contracted through CVS at the state level. And so they're, uh, starting at, um, I think it was River Traces, they've already started and they're, they're, uh, supposed to start next Monday at Ridge Wood. And then Autumnfield, I think is being, uh, getting their paperwork in place to get them vaccinated. So they're all getting vaccinated through that system and they are not included in the 506 right now, but they'll be included into that. So the 506 includes the hospitals, staff, the EMS, the people that are testing, uh, doctors' offices where they may be doing close contact with clients and patients that have it. And, um, whichever of the long-term care facilities may be entered in the CVMS would be put in there as well. So that's where we're at right now as far as dosing. Today is 506 shots given out. I, well, we're, uh, 1B1, so the next group of people is everybody that's over 75 years old and are 75 and older. I expect us to start on that Monday, uh, the 6th, the 11th, for us to start doing that. And I'll go through the plans on that a little bit later, I just want to show the phases right now. Quickly behind that, all the healthcare workers and frontline essential workers who are age 50 and older will be 1B2. Then 1B3 is healthcare workers and frontline essential workers that are under the age of 50. So that is your, um, 1B group divided into three sections. And, uh, some of the, some of the healthcare workers and essential frontline workers that they have listed would include behavioral health providers, uh, environmental service staff, uh, nursing technicians, pharmacy techs, um, public health and emergency preparedness workers, uh, and desk people that work in those clinics and settings like that. And then frontline essential workers are firefighters, police that haven't been covered already, educators, so, uh, the teachers would be covered there. Manufacturing, uh, detention center, food and agriculture, postal workers, transit workers, uh, and grocery store workers. So they'll fall under the 1B2 and 3 based off of their age category right there. So that will be the next wave and right now, we're doing 1B1, will start next Monday. So then we get to phase 2 and they've broken that out into everyone that's 65 to 74 and then 16 to 64 with a high-risk medical condition. Incarcerated homeless that were not vaccinated above because of their age or whatever factors they might have been. And then the essential workers that were not covered under the vaccine above would be hit during phase 2. I, I can't even guess when phase 2 would begin. I'm sure it's not going to begin until the middle of February at least, though. That's why we're asking for patience from everybody. And then group 3 will be the students, um, for college and, uh, K through 12. If they were not vaccinated above because of their health conditions or something like that. And then lastly, it'll be opened up for everybody else that didn't fall into one of those three categories. Yes, sir.
Jim, it seems rather specific through 1 and a little bit of 2, and then 3 it starts falling, the specifics start falling away. Yet, uh, my logical mind tells me that's a lot of folks under the last of 2, 3, and 4. It's just going to be a mad rush to see who gets it next or?
I don't want, no, I, I wouldn't use a mad rush, it's going to be a systematic rush. We'll have everything in place, we're going to try to make it as orderly as possible. And I, I must add that I'm not going to have to do this as long as the health department, okay? Um, the, the providers, your medical providers are also going to be signing on, they're going to be receiving the vaccine. CVS, I'm sure Walmart Pharmacy, Walgreens, O'Neills and all of them, they're going to end up becoming providers as well. So they'll be able to vaccinate, uh, as well as us. So they'll probably do theirs by appointments, you know, calling their clients and coming in and, and then we're going to be there moving ahead, planning for anybody that doesn't get hit up in those other places or they choose to come to the health department.
Just for future clarification for the public, will you guys be doing the vaccinations through 2 or at least part of 2, stage 2?
We'll be doing it all through all 4.
All 4?
Yes. I'm not sure what it's going to look like when we get to 4, but, uh, we'll be doing.
But 2 especially?
Well, 1 and 2 we'll-
1 and 2.
Yeah, uh, the other providers aren't receiving any vaccinations, I, I don't think, until the end of the month, but I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so for Monday, uh, when we start the, um, 1B1, the everyone 75 and over, I have about 6,000 people in this county that fall into that category. Um, I'm sure not everyone wants it, but a lot of people at that age group are probably going to want it, so we anticipate that. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, though, I'm limited with my doses. I, I'm planning on only having 100 doses a day. That doesn't, that's not a lot when you consider 6,000 people. And just to let y'all know, if I can only do 100 per day, because that's all they send me, let's say 100 per day, I can only do that, it's going to take me about a month to vaccinate everybody. So that means that we have to be patient, that's why I don't expect us to go to the next phase for another month. But who knows, they may end up turning around and giving me 400 doses a day as an average. I, I don't know. If that's the case, we'll ramp up based off of that expectation as much as possible. So again, I'm asking everybody to be patient, um, and, and realize that, uh, I know that there's going to be more than 100 people that want that vaccine on that first day, but I'm not going to be able to do that. So we had to come up with some kind of a system. So, uh, by tomorrow, hopefully by tomorrow evening, we'll have a phone number for people to call and register to be one of those 100 people so that we don't have, we don't, I don't want to put 400 people in a line and then tell the other 300 that we didn't have enough for them. So I'd rather they, uh, know that they're going to be one of the 100 and then we're going to do that every day that we operate. We're going to set up at Community College in Southside at first to try to get the north side and the south side of the county, uh, and that's between our two biggest, uh, populations, so we can, we can hit that area. And we're going to try to operate, uh, from 12 to 4 because that's, I could run 25 people through a day, I mean, through an hour. And that'll get, cover my 100. And if we get 100 and 200 doses, then I can extend it to 6 o'clock or something like that, uh, in order to get more people in. So that's the plan. And again, I, I'm sorry I don't have a better plan or better way of getting it out to everybody, but with only 100 a day, that's all I can really do right now.
How are you and your staff holding up?
Well, that's why you would ask. See that picture right there? I don't know, y'all see that? That's, that's a Saturday morning at the health department. Look at all the staff there working to get those numbers in. So we're, we're, we're cranking and, you know, and, and it was, it's been hard operating just the testing and the contact tracing. But now to have to add on to the, the vaccinations, it's, it's, it's trying. We're very fortunate that we have, um, the, you know, the people that can also help us with the EOC and, 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 uh, other people, but I, I'm glad you asked because they are really, they're really, uh, cranking it out. As a matter of fact, I thought to myself, and I didn't want to tell you a long story, but, because I know you've got a lot of meeting, but I used to work at Wendy's and got through college and I learned a lot. I learned how to count money and how to be nice to people and how to kind of prepare for how many hamburgers to put down at a time. But then they used to always, you know, when you heard the word bus, you know, everybody came out and got ready and, and cranked out those buses on Friday nights, you know? We've been doing the bus load of work for about six months now, so. Will do, will do. So, let me see, get back if there's any questions then.
When you speak of "they," you're talking about the North Carolina Department of Health or just North Carolina, uh, executive branch that's supposed to be-
If I'm talking about they sending vaccines or-
Yeah, getting, they're the ones that are acquiring the vaccines for the state.
The federal government gets it to the state, DHHS, and then DHHS allocates it based off of their matrix, whatever they have.
Do you see any holdup there with DHHS?
No, I think they're pretty good about getting it out. They've been, I think they've been pretty good about passing out the vaccine.
I mean, there's been some reports that there's roughly 12 million dosages and only 3 million dosages have been giving, been given out nationwide and then that-
Nationwide?
Yeah, and then there's a, a lag period there. And I was wondering if we were suffering from any, uh, administrative snafus?
Not that I know of. We get our shipment directly from McKesson, who is a contractor of Moderna.
Okay.
It doesn't even go to the state and then come to us.
So you cut out the government middleman?
Straight from the distributor, straight to us.
Great.
But it's based off of what they told them that we are to get.
Any other questions, would you? Brian?
Jim, just for you to clarify for the board, the reason you're talking about Beaufort Community College and Southside High School is so that we have a large parking area because you're intended to keep people in their vehicles and work through the vehicles and, and allow those queues to stack up as they need to.
Correct. We, we don't want to pull people out of their cars to get vaccinated. We want to keep them in the, the cars, uh, so that they drive up. We've got plenty of space out there, so, uh, they don't have to do that. And, um, then we also needed an area to put them for about 15 minutes after they get shot if they want to wait there just in case they have some kind of a allergic reaction to it. Probably. We'll get there, we'll, we'll adjust when we, we can. I would say that if, if the, if the weather gets really bad, if it's a mild rain, we'll, 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 we'll deal with that. If it's a really bad storm coming, then we'll have to probably cancel it due to inclement weather.
David?
Yeah, I have, well, maybe one question. Has the, uh, county health director, uh, one of the, the things we're going to discuss tonight, we're missing to discuss, is the lockdown and public policy.
Is your mic on?
Okay, sorry. They are to discuss the lockdown and public policy tonight. And, uh, my question is, is this, are we, uh, do you have an opinion or a recommendation to make about whether things ought to be about the way they are or do we need to be changing it in one direction or the other? If you follow what my, what I'm saying?
Well, I, I, I feel like, uh, the tools are out there for people if they would follow the guidelines, you know? I think those are all that's necessary, you know, as far as, um, the wearing the mask and the, the physical distance from each other and washing hands. I think that, um, I think a lot of what we're seeing is people that got together for the holidays. And I think that's, um, that's, the increased risk is by, is by getting with a bunch of people, especially family members who tend to let their guard down around each other. I'm not one to advocate for people not to see their loved ones, so that's a hard question to ask. I think it's out there for people to protect themselves. And, um, so I, I don't necessarily say that we need to lock down anything. Is that what you want to know or, I mean, is that what you're asking?
Well, uh, would you, would you favor loosening up the requirements or keeping them about the way they are? Or are we going to more, more stringent?
I believe, yeah, keeping where they are right now.
And not change them?
Well, I get, I don't know. My opinion is, is that the more that we, uh, follow the guidelines, the better off we're going to be. And so, uh, I, I'm happy with where we are as far as those policies and procedures.
Commissioner Richardson?
Tacking on to the question that the attorney asked, there's a lot of misinformation out there about this. This is a virus. It ultimately is going to run through the whole population one way or another as a disease or with people that are inoculated against it. And until it does that, everybody is at risk and the whole system i- is going to fail to function properly. I see, uh, I've seen in the newspaper, uh, quotes from very important public officials that say, "We have to do the lockdown to stop the virus." That is the biggest untruth out there. You're not going to stop the virus with a lockdown. You can control the virus, you can slow the virus down, but until enough people get this, the longer you hold off enough people getting this or getting the vaccine, the more that you're going to go broke. Because what's happening, and I'm saying something that I intended to say later on in my part of the program under discussion he's talking about, and I'll probably say it again, the longer we keep this lockdown going, the more people we are destroying. And I think we've seen here tonight that the people that are at risk are the people who have a comorbidity or are aged above certain ages. Those are the people that need protection. The idea of locking everybody down and keeping everybody locked down was a political decision that was made to destroy a president. That's over with. It's time to get on with getting society back to where it's supposed to be and get out of the lockdown mania, but advise the people who are at risk to protect themselves. And yes, Jim, I believe that you do have within your, and tell me if I'm wrong, within your, your bag of tricks, uh, you can quarantine people for up to 30 days and you can quarantine them again if they need it. So our health directors have a lot of discretion in controlling this. And, uh, I, I feel for Jim and, and having to answer a question like this because it is somewhat of a political question and he is a technical person, if you will, as more opposed to a political person. I'm a political person. This is destroying our country. We have to get off of the false representations that are made by the press that we can control this and we can cure it with lockdowns. That is simply not true.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest with you, I think as part of the, my hesitation to give you such a clear answer is because to me, lockdown might be different from what other people call lockdown. And to me, I'm implementing measures. I'm recommending measures to save, you know, people that have to prevent themselves from contracting COVID virus. So when I'm thinking of these things, I'm thinking of these are implementations that you could do or you should do. I do have quarantine ability, but that's for an individual person or for a facility. And that's what we do, you know, when, when you are positive, you're signing a piece of paper that recognizes that you're on isolation. And then if you're a contact, we tell you to be on quarantine. So we are doing those implementations. But I don't use the word, I'm not locking them down. So that's why, I mean, I don't like, to me, that a lot of it is a decision that people make is based off of more than just public health. You also have economic issues and you have social issues and other things. So it's very hard for me to say, yes, you should be doing this. From a public health perspective, the more we keep people away from each other, the better off we are. But that's where I, that's where my senses kind of go, you know?
Commissioner DePurte?
Yeah, just to, um, go along with what, uh, our director's saying, it's very important that we all understand, the public understands, that the only lockdown measures that can be enforced are general statute lockdowns, which there are none at this point. Uh, we here locally create ordinances and ask that they be enforced. And then we have to get the sheriff and the, uh, I guess for the city to get their, their police department to enforce these, uh, measures. But we're not doing that. We have not done that. I, I can't imagine us enforcing any kind of ordinance to hinder an economy in Beaufort County that is, is, uh, fledgling at best for a lot of folks. A lot of people will not be coming out of this. I mean, you know, hey, even I have a small government job, the rest of you guys have government jobs. And we're, you're, we're going to get paid. government jobs, and we're going to get paid. These people aren't getting paid, and they're hurting really bad. And there's not going to be enough government money to keep them going. So, you know, this year coming up is going to be a tough year if the economy doesn't really turn around. So, I appreciate your opinion and your wise discourse, Director. Thank you.
First time I've been accused of that.
All right. Thank you, Jim, and thank you for all you do and all that your staff does. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
I'm here tonight to ask for the ability to advertise and fill for a deputy register of deeds position that has recently become vacant in my office. The register of deeds office has always had five employees, including the register, and it works very well to have that number because we do a lot of checks and balances and rotation of jobs. All employees are cross-trained to do all things, and I need your permission to fill that position.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item K, tax assessor's office. Lloyd Salter.
Head me up first, I believe, for the tax settlement case, the PTC case, that is Ms. Anita Jones. The county has an agreement with Ms. Jones, or we discussed an agreement with Ms. Jones on her property. Got a little bit of information here about it. It's 121 East Second Street. Essentially, the board at one time affirmed a value of $806,537. I'm proposing, and she's accepted, a 6.67% decrease down to a value of just a bit below that, a $752,700 for equalization. It's an apartment building made of old house, and it's actually, she's provided some buildings that, this puts it more equalized with, more in equity with.
I move we accept the offer.
I move we accept the offer.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Six zero.
All right. My next piece is, now, I'm one of those that have to look at the mic. I've got a bad habit of moving, I apologize. So, my next piece is actually permission to advertise and fill a position. This is actually previously mentioned, I believe, that this was the, is the assistant assessor position. The, not a current occupant, but the occupant that was in it has retired, just real recently, actually, as of last week. So, this would be the number two position in the department. As of this moment, it is designed to be kind of oversee the personal property, day-to-day, the listing and the auditing of that department, personal property with the county. And again, that would be kind of my number two position as well, and I'm looking for permission, of course, to hire that position. Space. Yes, sir, that is a position where the lady just retired, so it is an existing position, yes, sir.
There's a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Carney.
Leading vice chairman and board, have two items for you tonight. The first one is approval, or not necessarily approval. Blunts Creek Fire Department is entering into a lease purchase of a fire apparatus. In that lease purchase, there was a document provided to the county for the chairman of the board to sign, and specifically stated, if you look at the third paragraph of that attached agreement, it says, "The fire department has made us aware of their intention to acquire new capital assets through a lease purchase transaction with your firm. Please be advised that the county has no objection to this transaction." So, in order to make sure there is no objection, that needs to come before the entire board. So, I just ask now for approval that there is no objection.
Commissioner Richardson?
These, Carney, when these things have come before us before, we've had a lot more information than this. For instance, who are we buying this from? How much does it cost? How much is the interest rate? What are the terms? Who the salespeople are? Did you get bids? And what are they? On and on this thing goes, and I can't vote for a blank check.
So, I want to make sure we're clear. We're not purchasing anything. This is Blunts Creek Fire Department with their budget, and I know we provide tax funds that go back to them, but this, through their agreement, I do have another document that they asked that really doesn't go to us, it goes to legal, but I still don't think it has the information that you're asking for.
I think you need to bring the information that we need back because what's being asked for is a blank check. And there have been accusations in the past on purchases, and I want to avoid those accusations. This is not a matter of, "Oh, all you have to do is sign this. The county has some liability here, we wouldn't have to sign this." So, I want to know how much money we're spending, what we're buying, how long we're going to be paying, what the interest rate is, on and on. I want to know all that financial stuff, and the three bids.
This is the Blunts Creek Fire Department making this purchase?
Yes, sir.
And they're not asking the county to give us, give them any money?
No, sir. Not specifically.
I mean, I know they can use their tax.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Carney, if other agencies out there, like whoever, Chocowenity, buys a piece of equipment, it doesn't come before us, unless it's got this clause there.
It depends on the way they go about buying or financing. In this specific company that they've used this for lease, it is in that company's policy that they would get this done just to make sure that a truck is not from this company. They have found it needful to know that the county commissioners didn't have an objection to the nonprofit contracted with them in purchasing a piece of equipment.
Okay.
So, it's not necessarily, it doesn't happen on every occasion by any means. This agreement is for this finance or lease company specific, but there are others that do require that. But we've had other purchases in the county in the past year that nothing has come before the board with, they've been able to secure their finances or purchase their apparatus without that.
Brian?
The big meat of this is in the second paragraph, and what it is, they're making sure essentially that they are in a tax district, they're receiving tax money, that they are in compliance with their contract. I think the financing company just wants to make sure that you're not going to pull the rug out from underneath them, and they're going to be stuck with financing.
Mr. Chairman?
In the past, you know, I've had, I've been here a while, I've had complaints about these kinds of purchases, about irregularities that go with these kinds of purchases, and there's tax money involved in this. See, all these guys sitting around here, we're elected to protect the public's tax money. We have a fiduciary responsibility, and I really don't think we should let other fire departments, since there's tax money in it, go out cutting deals because we have found out some pretty fantastic things in the past, like a chief had $250,000 in his personal account because he didn't know what else to do with it. So, you find out some amazing things. We have a responsibility here, and while these people, this thing may look like a simple document to sign when the lawsuit comes, guess who's going to be named in it if we sign this? We're going to be named in it too. So, I think that we're entitled to this information in order for us to be able to give our approval.
I make a motion that we approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, and I would defer to the county attorney on this, but just want to be clear, I do not believe that private nonprofits, even though they are receiving county tax dollars, are required to follow the purchasing guidelines that we as a state organization or a subset of the state are required to follow. So, they don't necessarily have to go get three bids, they can negotiate because they're a private nonprofit. They are not a government entity. That's my understanding. I defer to the county attorney if he has a different opinion of that.
Well, while you may want to say that, there's a reason that these people want us to sign this. There is something unusual about the financing method here. There's all kinds of financing schemes out there. We don't know what the financing scheme is on this. We have an obligation to all of the people in Beaufort County, in addition to the people that live in the Blunts Creek area, to make sure these people are not being taken. They don't want us to sign this for nothing. If they wanted to sign it for nothing, you wouldn't be here. We have an obligation and a responsibility, and we need to carry out our responsibility to the public. And it's a simple request, it's not a difficult request. The fact that people are resisting makes me believe there's something here that's funny.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? The vote is three, three. No action.
Would you mind repeating specifically the information you would like?
Well, it's the financing information. It's the agreement that they are citing, which will give the interest rate, the principal amount, the terms of payment, the rent they're going to be paying, what they're buying, and I would like to see some bids. Because in the past, there have been, there are plenty of accusations that Good Buddy went and bought a unit from Good Buddy. So, I want to see some comparable bids.
Brian?
With all due respect, how about we get out of the middle of this, and we have the chief from the fire department come and make a presentation to the board? That way, we're not in the middle of it.
That's a scheme. That's a scheme. Wait a minute, let me finish. That's a scheme because when four or five people walk in here from a fire department, all these people are going to do is approve it. All I'm asking for is some factual financial information, some hard information. There's nothing unusual about my request. Now, if you want to be stormed by the public coming in here and seeing an elected body wilt and go ahead and say, "You guys can do this because y'all are mad at us," that's a political stunt, Mr. Manager, and I'm not biting.
Mr. Richardson, I hate to tell you, but I'm not going to change my vote. I don't care if 5,000 people come in, I'm not going to wilt.
And you can say that, whether it means anything or not, I don't know. It's a nonsensical statement.
Why did I make the motion?
It's a nonsensical statement. You don't know till you get on the firing line what you're going to do.
Bring me this information.
Brian?
No, bring me the information. Don't bring me a bunch of people in here that are going to be mad at me because I'm not going to let them do what they want to do. This is a business, this is a business deal, and that's all it is. Why are you resisting common sense?
I'm not resisting anything I'm presenting, but I do see value in a representative of that department if there's further question other than what they've asked me to bring for them to be able to answer those questions.
Go ahead, Brian.
I was just going to reiterate that. Otherwise, we're back and forth and back and forth. The chief of the department is the one who's in charge of that. He has all that information. He can bring it all, and then if you have questions for him, you can ask him that instead of saying, "Well, you didn't bring me what I needed, so we'd have to go back to them again." You bring the person who's in charge to the table and you ask them the question. It's just like you ask the superintendent to come. It's like you ask other people to come and speak to you about things. Have the chief of the department come and speak to you and tell you what he needs, and don't put us in the middle of it.
Well, that's fine, providing he sends the information and it's in the agenda book, but I don't do this deal where he walks in the door and throws it on the table and says, "Approve it, I brought you what you wanted." Nobody has time to study it, nobody has time to read it, nobody has time to understand it. So, yeah, as long as I get it in my agenda book, you can send 100 people in here.
Carney, just invite him to come, and the other thing is, we don't have to worry about a whole lot of people coming because our attendance is restricted. So, just make sure he gets the information to us prior to the meeting so everyone would have it, and we should be fine.
I'll take care of that request, and when given, make sure it is on the agenda.
Carney, can you ask him to get it to us soon and email it to us?
If, if you're...
And is there, and also ask him if there's some sense of urgency on this? I'm not sure what...
And I don't have dates associated. I am a little concerned what 30 days is going to do for them, but we go through that process.
Well, if you can find out, let us know if there's some other thing that's being hung up here.
Okay, you can continue.
All right. Second item I have before you is a request for a budget amendment. Emergency services or emergency management have received several grants in the last several years, homeland security grants and also a Duke Energy grant. There were two grants specific, one being a homeland security grant that was for dive suits, specific for Sydney dive team. We were able to purchase those suits. What happened? They had suits, those suits, a new version of the suit came out, we moved the grant around. We left about $630 of funds in there that were being renegotiated for a contract on those suits. The second grant, the Duke Energy grant, was for water rescue equipment. Half of that equipment was purchased, the second half was to be portable inflatable Zodiacs, and then COVID came in on both of those. It slowed the correspondence and the inability right now to get the two Zodiacs. So, those funds, when budget ended last year, fiscal year, they were transferred into the general budget, but they are associated with grants. So, we're asking, as you see the budget amendment, for a total of $6,865 to be moved from the general fund back in for those specific grants so they can be completed and closed out.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second, a second by Commissioner Walker? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed? Six zero.
Thank you for your time.
Item number M, economic development. Martin Johnson.
Happy New Year. So, I've got two economic development grants for your approval in terms of having the chairman sign the actual paperwork. The first one is the performance grant, and this is a grant between the Beaufort County and Project River Breeze, which is also known as Pamlico Air with an E, and also Pamlico Air without the E, which is a company establishing manufacturing plant in Beaufort County. As you know from previous discussions, this is an expansion of their operations into a new product line, specifically HEPA filters, and they have plans right now to locate in Beaufort County rather than Texas based on the incentives provided by the state and local levels. There is a chart in your abstract which shows the various grants that this company has been awarded based on different timeframes and different job investments, different investment numbers. The one we're concerned about tonight is the county performance grant, which is based on an investment of $3,050,000 over a five-year time period with an average wage of $39,651. The actual county wage rate is $38,008 for 2020, and these jobs would be for engineers, shift managers, assemblers, and administrative positions. Working through the maths of it all, the grant is proposed... Working through the maths of it all, the grant is proposed, as you've passed previously, for $75,000. And the grant will only be paid after all taxes and other, other issues resolved with the county, and nothing can go unpaid. And also if the jobs are created. The period for this grant is five years, and the period for holding the jobs is five years plus one. And the performance grant would be returned to the county proportional to the number of jobs not created. So tonight, I'm asking you to vote to allow the chair to, with staff, to sign the attached grant documentation for $75,000 based on the company creating 43 jobs and $3 million and $50,000. In the information you did receive, there was a couple of typos in terms of the year. I apologize for that. They should have read 2021, not 2020. We've been working on that for, on this grant since April, so we didn't expect the year to change. And the number of jobs, as I say, is 43, and the wage rate is $39,651.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second? And a second? Any further discussion? Commissioner Booth.
Yeah.
Martin, this is an expansion company. Am I correct?
This is an expansion of Pamela Co. Air.
How many employees do they have now?
In Beaufort County, they have about 15 at their headquarters here. In Wilson, they have about another 50, and then they have another 100 in Texas and Florida.
Are they going to move any of those employees here?
No. No, this is a brand-new operation. This is a brand-new product. This will be unique to Beaufort County, which actually helps the product because, you know, the equipment they will be using will be here, and they'll have to make the filters here.
So, so this company right now don't have no employees in Beaufort County?
They have the headquarters over here.
And that, do those 15 count?
Those 15 in this whole grant process, yes. They will be retained.
So they won't be 40, so they'll actually be 15 before the 3?
No, 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 no. These, this is 43 new jobs, and the 15 have to be retained. So total, it'd be 58.
Thank you.
Brian.
So, so just for clarification for the board, this company has its headquarters located here. It does not have a manufacturing operation here yet. This would put a manufacturing operation in Beaufort County.
Thank you.
Anything further from any of the commissioners? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed? 6-0.
Thank you. The next grant is for the same company, and it is for the chairman to be allowed to sign the 1NC grant, 1 North Carolina grant for Project River Breeze, Pamela Co. Air. As I said, this is the same company as I just talked about. In this case, however, the 1NC assumptions are that Pamela Co. Air will invest $600,000 to renovate a building and then $850,000 in equipment. And this will be over a three-year period, and the average wage here would be $38,012, which is above the county wage rate of $38,008. So very, very similar project. Again, the grant will require the company to achieve its capital investment and job creation goals, as well as some other details within the 1NC grant, such as having 50% healthcare coverage for its employees. The public benefits derived from the proposed 1NC grant will be an increase in taxes, income taxes, increase in sales taxes and property taxes, plus the creation, in this case, of 39 jobs in Beaufort County. So again, I would request that the commissioners vote to allow the chair to sign this grant.
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
I have a question.
Commissioner Richardson?
The money, the grant money, is it going to flow through the Beaufort County government?
Yeah.
So we have some liability with this.
Basically, the money flows through the county, but only after they've created the jobs and only after they have, and in 25% or quartile increments.
So this is not an upfront grant?
No.
Oh, okay.
Any other? Commissioner Rebbos?
How mu, they're going to, they're leasing this building?
It's the industry-ready building, yes.
Okay, so they're not buying it?
They're not buying it at the moment.
Okay. So one of the provisions was that they had to pay the taxes. Who's actually paying the taxes on that building?
The taxes that are being paid on the Committee 100 building, I mean, it would be paid by the Committee 100, but obviously through the lease amounts and what have you, they would pay it.
But they're not paying it directly?
In the, in the performance grant, that amount of money, that investment is subtracted. So we're not talking about what currently exists.
So the, the increase in tax revenue?
Right.
Would come from what?
From the...
Equipment?
The new equipment, and then also the renovation of the building, and also they are talking about expanding the building.
Okay. Okay. One, one last comment.
Sure.
I was in Lowe's the other day and bought air filters, okay?
Yeah.
Pamela Co. Air is in Lowe's right now, and they had stacks and pallets of their, their product there. So that's different.
They are competitive.
Anything further from any of the commissioners? All in favor? Opposed? 6-0.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And hopefully, we will have a ribbon cutting very soon, next couple of months. Why can I never break these things?
Item number N has two items under it. Thank you. Mr. Manager, you're going to take care of the first item.
I am, Mr. Vice Chair. As you may recall, I sent a note this afternoon. Our chief financial officer is a potential contact of a potential contact. So out of an abundance of caution, she is waiting to find out whether that contact came back positive. So she is not here tonight. So I'm going to take that, that, those, these next two items. The HR director is also here to, to assist in the, the second item, the pay plan implementation. But this is the finance report that she would be giving, so, so we'll stumble through Make sure we're back. Hang on. Evidently, it didn't like it. Let me go back to...
There it is.
Yeah, but it's the wrong slide. There we go. Okay. So this is the financial presentation. All right. So this is wrapping up 1920, fiscal year 1920. The last year's audit has been completed. The LGC is currently reviewing that. All audits across the, across North Carolina for local governments are required to be reviewed and signed off by the LGC, the Local Government Commission. They are currently doing that. A draft copy will be sent to you next week, and we anticipate having that audit presentation by the auditors as they come every year and make that presentation on February the 1st.
If I may interrupt, I want a hard copy. Don't email me this thing.
They'll give us hard copies.
Okay.
So that, that audit presentation is anticipated to come in on February the 1st. Don't know how the state is on whether the LGC's backed up. Typically, they're moving fairly quickly, but, but we'll see. So again, this is last year, so the total general fund balance on 630 of 20 was $24,804.15. So an increase of 3.7 million. So your general fund balance was $24.8 million. There is some restricted money or committed money in there. That $4 million, you see, 4.3 million. Those are grant fundings. It is money that is set aside, the 8% that we're required to hold. So you have an unassigned, or what they call available fund balance, of roughly $20.4 million. Now, if you take that number and divide it by what your expenditures were in last fiscal year, that turns out to be 34.8% of your expenditures is what your fund balance is. Now, the board had a policy or has a policy, still has a current policy, that, that you want to try to maintain a 35% fund balance. Now, there's been discussion back and forth with the board about whether that's too high. At one time, the board was talking about a 25% fund balance. But right now, based on those numbers, and of course, that's what you, that's, the way you get that percentage is, you take what's, what's essentially unassigned and available fund balance and then divide it by what the expenditures were in that year, that last year, under that audit. So as we go into the, the next year, that number may change up or down if you increase or you decrease. But that's why it says it's a snapshot as of 630-20. Now, just to make sure that you, that, that there's not a misunderstanding on the increase in fund balance, there is $1.08 million of CARES COVID Act funding that was received in 1920 that was rolled into fund balance. You know, we were allowed to essentially supplant existing funds that you had for salaries, and that's the way we did that so that it would be a very clean audit and a clean reimbursement from the state. So that was done in 1920, but it has already been spent in 2021. So you're going to see this increase, when, when the auditors come, you're going to see this big increase in fund balance. But don't forget that that money just went into fund balance, and because it rolled into the next year, you spent it in the next year. It's the same money. So, so although you'll see a bump, you'll see it down in this next one. So this is a review of where we are in our general fund revenues from July 1 to December 31 of this year. This is essentially your first six months of your budget, the actual and the percentage collected year-to-date. So you'll see there that year-to-date revenue is 36.5 million, and you see how it breaks out, 27 million of that or 72.3% of your property taxes. Your sales taxes are 2.7 or 32%. And remember, you've only got three months worth of sales tax in, so that's why, you know, it's delayed three months, so we're, we're delayed on that. So that's why that number is not higher than, than what it would be. But it catches up because as we get into the end of the fiscal year, those three months get thrown back. So you're three months into the next fiscal year before all your sales tax comes in for the, for that, for the existing fiscal year. And you'll see the restricted governmental and then all the other funds that are, that are together there. Property tax billing, the levy in 2020 as compared to 2019, you'll see that in 2019 it was 34.2, and then in 2020 it was 34.8. So there has been some increase in that levy. It excludes motor vehicle billing, which we anticipate seeing a slight growth in the motor vehicle tax billing. So it clearly shows the additional $650,000 we expect to collect in property taxes this year. And that's assuming that our collection rate remains around 98%, which is where it has remained over the last several years. As you'll recall, the, the good thing about the way, and this happened several, several years ago, when they combined the tax and tag piece, called Tax and Tag, where you have to pay your motor vehicle taxes before you get your tags renewed. There was a lot of issues. There was a lot of ways to play games with getting your tags renewed years ago, and, and the state, along with the Association of County Commissioners, worked together to kind of put an end to that. So it helped. I mean, if you recall, if you, if you've been here a while and watched audits, our motor vehicle collection rate was abysmal at times. I mean, it was in, sometimes in the 70s and 80%. And now it is essentially 100% because you cannot renew your tag without paying your, the taxes on your vehicle. So it is a, it is a good thing. So these are the collections current year-to-date as of December 31 compared to last year. So last year, at this time, we were at 25.7 or about 75% collection. This year, on the 2020 levy, as of December 31, we're at 26.8 million, which is about 77.16%. So we are ahead. If, again, if it holds, and we anticipate that it will, property tax revenue for 2020 is expected to increase by approximately $650,000 above the 2019 levy amount. Sales tax collections for the first four months of the fiscal year, you'll see where it was last year in 2019, 2020, the first four months, 3.2 million. And then you'll see the first four months of this fiscal year, or first four months of the 2021, you'll see that that's 3.6. So it's up $400,000 in the first four months, or, or an average of about $100,000 per month. Again, it, it's unusual. We did not anticipate seeing that. We took the advice of, of the association and of the folks that were telling us what the pandemic was going to do to us, and we came back with a budget that we cut, and we reduced revenues on that side, anticipating that we would take a severe hit on that, and that has not materialized. In fact, we have gone the other way. It has been a surplus for us. So here you'll see the sales tax collections for the past five years and the growth numbers on that. It's been a robust growth in sales tax distributions. Remember, we talked about the fiscal year, current budget was built around a dramatically reduced sales tax revenue due to the unknown impact of COVID. Assuming sales tax remain at the $10 million mark, there's about $1.5 million in additional sales tax revenues that we feel can be appropriated to, to fund and pay for the pay plan implementation. That's where we were last year at this time, when we talked about the pay plan, and we'll get into that after this. But we wanted to show you why we believe that the numbers justify implementing that pay plan now, that based on the sales tax revenues, we see that increase and it can fully fund that. You'll see that the percentage growth on the right over there, from 2016 to 2017, there was an 8.4% growth in sales tax, 17 to 18, 4.3, 18, 19, 8.4, and then 1920 is 4.6. So we are continuing, that, that sales tax revenue continues to grow year over year. Some of those big increases were based on changes that the state put in place, where they started applying sales tax to different, different items and as well as services. Now, you know, you go and you have service done and you're, and you're taxed on that service. You used not to be taxed on services. Let me back up, sorry. So there you'll see the, the overall from 16, 7.9, all the way to 10.2 in 2020. Moving to the water fund, cash and investment balances as of December 31, you'll see the comparison between 19 and 20. We're up about $600,000 compared to last year at this same time. You'll see the revenue and expenditures. The difference is there, and we're to the good on both of those. The, the difference, though, on the expenditures is that it's, it's, it's related to paying of invoices. So those expenditures, although you see that expenditure a little different than the 2019, same figure, we had an additional, it's just the timing of when we pay those bills. So we got an additional bill in there. We paid the city of Washington a fair amount of money for water in some places, and, and it's my understanding from my knee that, that that's what that's related to, that we got an extra bill in, and it was just the timing of when that got paid as compared to when it got paid in 19. Solid Waste Fund, as of June 30, 2020, there was an available fund balance of $355,813, and, and that's a good thing. As you'll recall, that fund started out with zero fund balance when we established it. We have now been able to build some fund balance, which will allow the board to use some of that money to make improvements at those sites and do some work that needs to be done on those infrastructure-wise. The balances, you'll see a comparison of 19 and 20, 1.4 as of December 30, 2020, and then 1.2. The, it's, as she noted there, it's important to note that cash balance is a little bit high as of 30, as of December 31. That's because your, the, the solid tax fee, and it's a fee, it's not a tax, it's a fee, is charged on your tax bill. So we've received a majority of that already, and we will continue to close, close the gap on that very quickly as we get to, to this first week in January. But you will still see, so it's not that there's an outstanding amount of money there. You will still see the expense side come in because we're paying that out at 112. So just like your taxes, you get it in early, you get a bunch, you get a big chunk, but still got to pay out in the next 12, the next six months of that 112. So you see how those stack up. I will try to answer any questions you have relating to that if I can.
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Rebbos?
More of a comment, I guess, than a question. The good news on the property taxes tells me that one of our fears was what the impact of COVID would be on people paying property taxes if they're out of jobs and stuff, and it seems that that's, at least the data today isn't suggesting that.
I think you're going to see some, there are going to be some people who have been hit harder than others, who are going to have some difficulty. I've had some phone calls relating to that. In fact, I had, I had a lady call me and, and asked that, I asked the board, I asked you to not advertise delinquent taxes, and I explained to her that you have no control over that, that that's set by statute. And I explained to her that you have no control over that, that that's set by statute, that you are required by statute to advertise late taxes. Of course, you know, that was not what she wanted to hear, but, but that's what, that's the way the statute is. So there are going to be some folks who are, I mean, obviously, there's some folks who are having some difficult times. So overall, we've been fortunate as a county on our revenue side, but that does not negate the fact that there are some businesses and some industries that have been hit tough and will have some, especially some individual property owners will have some issues.
Commissioner Richardson?
Just a question. The tipping fee, is it included in the municipal? If you live in town and you're taxed, you pay the tipping fee just like everybody else in the county?
Yes, sir. The, on your tax bill, so for everybody in the county who has a piece of property that has a structure on it. Now, if you have vacant land, you're not charged that. Or if you can show the tax office that you have a private collection service, because a private collection service is paying the full ride, you have to pay the full ride with them. You have to pay the tipping fee, you have to pay the hauling fee, you have to pay all of it. Remember in Beaufort County, the fee that you're paying for solid waste is paying to dispose of all that solid waste, so it is included. Yes, sir.
People like David's trash service, if you have their service, you don't pay the tipping fee?
That's correct. You're only paying their labor cost essentially to pick your trash up. The amount that you're paying on the tax bill that is a fee is paying for disposal.
Maybe I didn't say that right. If you have David's tax service picking up your trash, you still pay the tipping fee on your tax bill?
Yes. Yes. You're paying the tipping fee. You are essentially paying to the service their labor charge, simply their labor cost. Unless it is a business, and then they're paying the full ride, or if you have a private contractor that you are paying, you can not, like I say, if, some of our churches do that, it's mostly businesses, but you may have an individual that has a dumpster at their house for some reason, I don't know, maybe they have a lot of trash. But if you have a commercial pickup and a commercial service, and you can show us that contract where you are paying the full ride, then you would not be charged that 165.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
Any other commissioner? All right. At this time, we will take our seven o'clock break. We will come back. It is 7:01. We'll come back at 7:11.
Our request today, our item for decision is implementation of our pay study. In 2017, Beaufort County contracted with the MAPS Group to complete a comprehensive pay study. Included in the project was review of employee job questionnaires, interviews with employees and department managers to assess job responsibilities, and compilation of relevant local salary data. The study produced a recommended classification and pay plan, as well as recommended FLSA status, which is used to determine if employees are exempt or non-exempt from overtime pay. Study documents were produced, including the following: organizational charts, an analysis of competitive salary data, allocation of classes to salary grades, a salary schedule, implementation strategies with associated costs, and recommended FLSA status. Recognizing that many changes have occurred in the three years since the pay study was originally completed, the Human Resource Director and the MAPS Group have worked together to review and update the cost allocation spreadsheet based on employee changes, such as removing terminated employees, adding new employees, and accounting for employees who may have changed positions within the county. Since the implementation options are based on years of service, either in the position or with the county, the calculations were updated to include the additional years of service since 2017. A final calculation was done to compare the greater of a 2% increase or the calculated amount from the pay plan. This assures that all employees receive a minimum of a 2% adjustment in pay, including part-time employees. The cost of the three implementation options, as well as a brief description of the strategies, are as follows. Option 1 was the greater of 2% or move employees to the probationary or minimum step plus 1% increase per year of service with the county. The cost, $1,684,100. Option 2 was the greater of 2% or move employee to the probationary or minimum step plus 1% increase per year of service in their current position. The cost, $1,417,300. Option 3 was the greater of 2% or move employees to 2.5% of the probationary step plus 1.5% increase for each year of service in their current position. The cost, $852,500. The staff recommends adopting implementation of option 2, beginning with the first payroll in February 2021, and has identified the $471,177 of necessary funding to pay for the costs for five months in the fiscal year 2020-21. In addition, adequate growth in sales and ad valorem tax receipts exists to fund the full year cost of the recurring expense moving forward. The recommendation is to approve the attached budget amendment also.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Then we have a second discussion. Commissioner Richardson?
Okay. When that study came out, there were some jobs that were identified as being, the pay scale was totally misapplied, and they needed a sort of a lump sum adjustment. Were those adjustments made?
They have not been.
Those adjustments haven't been made?
They would be included in this process.
Okay. I have another question. When the sheriff did his boondoggle with the 200 and something thousand dollars, whatever that was, the, a lot of people got 10 and 12,000 dollar raises, wasn't unusual. And he did that without a vote of the commissioners, by the way. There are people on that schedule who are identified as being a captain who received a pay increase, ranked as a captain, but they're actually wearing lieutenant's bars, if you go over there and look at them. Were those adjustments made necessary to scale people up into classifications so that they could receive those increases?
We'll defer that to the county manager.
When the sheriff made those changes, what he said to us was, he was, he was eliminating his corporal positions, and he was moving all of his staff up, and they were assuming additional responsibilities, and he was making those changes within his budget. In this pay plan, the consultant has looked at those changes, and that's where you see, so if there was someone that was put in a class, and they are above where they should be, then they, it's either the greater of where they were or 2%. So the folks that were adjusted up in that would not see an increase, because it's the greater of the two. They went, we actually had them go back and look specifically at that because we wanted to make sure that that, because essentially, you wouldn't want to double do that. That wouldn't be, they wouldn't be right to double it. So they looked at those numbers, and we had to go in and look at those individually as compared to the entire group.
So what we did in the sheriff's department was we upgraded about 40% of the department, and the rest of the department didn't get anything.
He essentially advanced, what he said was, he advanced some of his folks based on where the salary study would have been, and so that's why we wanted to go back and make sure that that was correct. So that's why we had them look at it.
Okay. Why, why are years of service involved in this study? Is that something arbitrary that we put in there?
No, sir. Actually, there were, when the consultant came in, they look at either total years of service, because what we have is, we've got a lot of compression in our salaries. So what that means is, somebody who has been here for 10 years makes X amount. You come in and get hired next week, and you come in making the exact same amount. So there's compression in the salaries. Because there hasn't been adjustments either based on longevity, performance, and only been COLA, and when you have a COLA, the entire range moves, so everybody moves. So you, you don't address the compression, and that's the biggest issue we have. So this was an attempt to address compression, and the way they do that was two ways. You could either say, it's the total number of years you've been here in the county, or it's the total number of years you've been in your last position. We chose, and of course, there are three options, and they range from the highest to the middle to the lowest. We chose the middle option, and that is based on the number of years of service in your current position. And we did that because our intent is to, if you pass this pay plan, our intent would be to come back to you in July and put before you in the new budget year a longevity proposal. That longevity would proposal would look at number of years of service in the county, and that would help going along, spreading that, helping make sure you can get that compression out of there, or help, help with the compression, so that you don't have somebody who comes in on day one making the same thing that somebody who's been here 10 years is making. So it, so just real quick, you know, everybody recalls, I think, because, because Ms. Vizi came and made the presentation with the board on it. Essentially, what they do is they look at, the pay plan is having, is a stool with three legs to it. One leg is COLA, and that's, that keeps everybody up at market. So you got to get folks to market. We weren't at market. The last time a study was done in the county was 2008, and that was implemented in 2008. The Archer Group did that study for you and made some changes. So from 2008, essentially, the COLAs would, would attempt to keep you at the market level. So you do that, then you have a longevity piece that is the second, second leg of that stool, and what that does is that helps keep people who have been here a long time, so you don't lose institutional knowledge. Because every time somebody leaves who's been here a while, not only do you lose institutional knowledge, but you also lose money in having to retrain somebody. So there's a small piece that you look at to try to keep people for their longevity. And then the third leg of that stool would be a performance adjustment, and that helps identify those who are performing at high levels and adjusting their salary based on some performance criteria that's equitable and fair. What we have heard, or at least what I've heard the board say in our past planning sessions is, we're not going toward performance adjustment piece. So we understand that's not the case, and so what we looked at doing was looking at option 2, which would adjust everybody to essentially where the market says they should be, and then we would come back to you in July 1 as part of the next year's budget and look at a longevity piece. Now, at one time, and I think it was before 2008 maybe, Beaufort County had a longevity plan. I don't know how long ago it was, it wasn't here when I got here, I don't think, Dolores said it was here when she got here. So our intent would be to try to, would be to bring you back something in July to look at that and say, here's another way to help, help with a compression piece. The, the second piece of that is, July 1, we would like, you have a pay-in-class plan that's, that's included in here, which talks about the, the grades, the description, and the ranges, the minimum, the midpoint, the maximum. There's also a fair labor standard designation in there where you say they're exempt or non-exempt. The board gets to set that, but you have to have some, there's some tests that go along with that from the Department of Labor. You can't just arbitrarily say everybody's exempt. There are certain people that, based on that test, they have to be non-exempt, which means you have to pay them overtime for anything over 40 hours. There are some people that, based on that test, you do not have to pay over, overtime over 40 hours. That's just part of the job. So in this plan, she has also recommended to update that fair labor standards and make some folks exempt that may not historically have been exempt. Now, the issue that we run into with that is, historically, and I don't, again, it was before I got here, and I'm not sure it was before Dolores got here as well, one big piece of that is in the sheriff's office. There are only two people in the sheriff's office who are exempt. That's the sheriff and the chief deputy. Everybody, everybody else is non-exempt. Now, you can, you could make everybody non-exempt. You could say everybody below the county manager is non-exempt. There's, there's no law against that. There is a law against making somebody exempt when they're not, when they, when they don't meet the test. So you can err on the side of giving it to everybody, but you can't err on the side of not giving it to folks who are supposed to get it. So when we looked at this, and I think Anita sent you a spreadsheet that, that had some of those concerns that we had about FLSA, the recommendation on a couple of those, a couple of those, based on their work schedule, would put them at a deficit if you said you are now exempt. Now, because for years, that's been the way it is, and the board made that decision, I'm sure the board had to have made that decision years ago, I just don't know when or how. But obviously, the board made that decision years ago, and I would assume you would want to stick with that. If you didn't want to stick with that, then we've got to look at how you make some remedy, because if you've got somebody who has historically been paid overtime, and their schedule is set to a certain piece, and then you cut them back based on an exemption status, then you're really, and it's not many people, there were a handful of folks, that it would really detrimentally impact. So if you choose to move forward with this pay plan, we would ask you to do two things. Let us come back to you in July 1 and propose to you a longevity piece that would apply to everybody, and then also let us come back to you with a proposal on the FLSA for those couple of positions that, that would be severely impacted if you agreed to use the recommendation that the MAPS study showed for exemptions. So those, those are the two pieces there. Just, and Dolores gave me this information earlier today, and I think you also saw the spreadsheet that, that ranked our employees about number of years here, and I think what I remember was about 60% of our employees have been here less than five years. What we are clearly seeing, and Dolores gave me that information today, in the last year, we had 43 people leave Beaufort County. The majority of those folks, and I think we can clearly say, are leaving for more money, and they're going to, predominantly, they're going to Pitt County, and they're going to Craven County, two of our neighbors. And we're spending a lot of money training people and getting them where they need to be, and then they're, they're leaving to go to another county for, for more money. That's not going to solve all of it. It is absolutely not going to solve all of it. I will admit to you that. But there has not been a pay study done since 2008. So we're 12 years with only adjustments based on COLAs. So we're out of whack in where we ought to be paying people based on what the market says they ought to be paid. That's what this study does. Option number two, takes those, those employees to where they should be and includes a 1% increase based on their years of service in their current position, not their total time with the county, but in their current position. And in order to address that, again, we would come back to you in the new year, in the new fiscal year, and propose to you a longevity piece, as well as a, a discussion about the Fair Labor Standard Act and how that applies to a couple of folks that would be significantly impacted by it.
And Brian could also add that the, the study implements a new salary plan and regroups classifications based on their job duties, the degree of difficulty of the job, the level of supervision they receive, the level they give, and that's what these analysts have done, is sit down and done questionnaires with each employee to determine where they should fall and to get our pay plan corrected. And that's part of our personnel policy to have an equitable. have an equitable, equitable and fair salary plan.
Yeah, that, that's right. And, and what's happened is, over the years, jobs have changed. People have taken on additional responsibilities. They've, they've moved in different responsibilities. So what the study did was, like, exactly like Dolores said, they came in and did analysis. They interviewed people. They looked at what their jobs were, and they said, okay, we need to rewrite this job description. That's what was part of the packet, you know, and you got that packet three years ago that had all that information. So they rewrote a lot of job descriptions, and they put people in positions, classifications, where they should be based on what they were doing. Uh, and then they also looked at where they would be in the market, and that was based on, um, comparables, which included looking at Bertie County, Craven County, Martin County, Nash County, Person County, Pitt County, Warren County, Wilson County, and the City of Washington, looking at what that essential market was for the folks that we were essentially in competition with. Um, so Commissioner Revolt asked a question today about, um, DSS and state funding, and how that would impact this. Um, so there are two pieces. You have purely county funding, which is county operations, and then you have shared funding that comes from the state at DSS. Health Department also has a little bit of that, but the majority of the Health Department is, their funding comes through grants and programs, and they apply against that. Um, and, and any changes in salaries are just absorbed in that. Uh, at DSS, there are multiple programs in DSS, and they have a different reimbursement rate. Um, it's a shared service between the state of North Carolina and the county governments. Um, so some of those programs pay a sixty percent reimbursement rate, some of them pay a forty percent, some of them pay a fifty percent. So talking with the DSS Director, she recommended, on average, we say fifty percent. So essentially, if you increased salary to someone at DSS, fifty percent, on average, fifty percent of that increase is absorbed by the state, as long as you're within the, within, um, an appropriate range. Um, so if you look at that, uh, and, and I sent that out today, if, and, you know, the total here is one point four, roughly $270,000 of that, we would back out for DSS because we, we would, we would show that as roughly fifty percent of what the state was picking up. Um, and then you gotta pull out the water fund. So the, the, the total cost on that's a little less. Uh, if you look at it, just the, the general fund net cost, it's a little over a million dollars annually, uh, and then the water fund cost would be about a hundred and forty thousand. Um, so again, as you move through the different funds, that, it changes a little bit. Um, but that's, that's the proposal. Um, you know, had the finance officer, she spent a lot of time looking at our numbers, um, because we wanted to make sure that, that when we brought this back to you, I mean, we've talked about this for the last three years. Um, and we've tried to put a plan together that would, um, that would reach the board on the many levels that we've heard from the board say, I like this, I don't like this. Um, so we tried to compromise on that, and, and like I say, that's why we've talked about the longevity piece. That's why we looked at option two. Um, and the, the final piece of that is, um, we, we believe we're able to do that and, and, and would also ask you, as we did when we came in before COVID, uh, and said, we want you to put a hiring freeze in place. With the implement, implementation of this, we would ask that you release that hiring freeze, um, and go back to, um, filling positions as they come, as they become vacant, uh, unless they are positions specifically that the board is, is charged with, and that's, you know, the manager, the, the, um, the tax collector, uh, tax administrator, and, and those specific people related to that. Um, but we're happy to answer any questions you have. I know it's a lot, uh, and it has been a long time in coming, um, but, but we feel like, um, that we have the funds available to do that, and, um, and like I say, the, the last time there was a salary study done was in 2008. So we think it's, it is, um, i- if we go, if we go too much further from the seventeen study, it would only be fair to do another study, because you're, you're, you're already three years out, going on four years. Um, so we think you're in a place where you can do it, finance officer's comfortable with it, um, and we recommend you move forward with that on, on option number two.
Okay, we'll go with Commissioner Richardson and then Commissioner Revolt.
I'll be brief. Uh, the, the, uh, COLA that was given, we gave a COLA last year and this year?
No, sir. We didn't get a, a COLA.
There wasn't a COLA in the budget this year? There was a COLA last year. About what was that?
Two percent.
Two percent last year. Okay. One, quite, one thing that I have in looking at this schedule, it looks to me like building inspectors are underrepresented based on their responsibility and what they do compared to a lot of other people.
All I can tell you is, I mean, we can certainly individually look at some of those and ask her to go back, um, but this was based upon their folks coming in, interviewing those people, finding out what it is they do, and then looking at what that market was based across, you know, because everybody has building inspectors on the budget. All counties have building inspectors. Some municipalities don't. Uh, but it was based on what the market would stand.
Well, it just, just looked to me like when you compared deputy sheriffs getting ten and twelve thousand dollar increases in one year, and building inspectors for what they do, getting nothing, but even if you look at the base rates in there, the training for a building inspector is more, a lot more intense than it is for a sheriff.
There are other classification issues that they look at that have to do with the, um, how dangerous the position is, and that, that is also a classification factor? The risk involved?
Right. And in our pay plan, we also do allow adjustments, correct me if I'm wrong, adjustments for certifications for building inspectors as they grow in their, as they, as they, as they achieve additional levels in their certification, they are rewarded for that, based on those, based on that duty.
Commissioner Revolt?
I take it that, um, the four hundred and seventy-one thousand that is needed for the balance next five months is actually less than that, because DSS is not figured, is subtracted out of that one.
It would be slightly less than that, because if you took out the proportional amount of the two seventy.
So there's, could be four hundred thousand, not four seventy.
Yeah, I, I would, I would have to have the finance officer run that and, and give us a solid number, but, but, but it would, it would not exceed what we've, what's been proposed.
Okay. On the grade recommendation changes that they made, did we adopt all of those?
You haven't adopted any of those. We're still operating under the old pay plan.
Okay, so we're operating with people that are probably out of the grade they should be in?
That's correct. Yes, sir. This would essentially.
Based on the study?
Yes, sir. And it would put people in the correct, and also it would attach it to where the state grades are, because right now, we would have that, that difference between what we shows a grade and what the state shows as a grade.
So will you bring those to us in the budget process?
Will we bring you what in the budget process?
Recommended grade changes?
These are the recommended grade changes.
Oh, okay.
Now, if there's an individual one that needs to be looked at again, that the board says, like Commissioner Richardson said, he, he may want the board to look at building inspectors again, we could do that. And, and we always have had that opportunity to do that, to look at what we call a reallocate, not a reallocation, a, um, adjustment, uh, where they come in and actually study the job again, um, if there were some specific ones that you wanted to look at.
Okay. And lastly, as part of that study, there were sixteen management and policy recommendations made. Most of those did not involve money. Did we, have we adopted any, all, or none of them?
The majority of those have been addressed, and they, they were addressed in the personnel policy. When you redid the personnel policy, actually, you weren't here at the time, but when the board redid the personnel policy, there were several items in there. Uh, some of it also deals with training, which we're, we're, we're slowly trying to ramp up on that. Been very difficult with COVID, of course, because you can't send people places. But the majority of those have been addressed. It was related to callback time and, and proportional vacation time. So when you had people working longer shifts, they were getting shorted on vacation time. So those things were addressed in the rewrite of the personnel policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further from any other commissioners? All right, hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Okay.
Mr. Manager, I know part of this, part of this, uh, pay study is that we release all the hiring freeze. Is it possible that we could keep this hiring freeze in effect to, to, to the budget time?
You are the policymaker board, and you can tell us you want to keep it or you don't want to keep it. That's up to you.
Who made the motion? Who? Would you accept a friendly amendment to your motion?
He didn't say that. When he said that, he didn't say that. The manager said is the only person that said that. That was never a part of the motion.
Okay.
Send the motion. We already got a motion. Sorry, passed.
No.
That was never a part of that motion.
What was never a part of the motion?
Because the manager said it after Commissioner Revolt had made his motion, and the motion was seconded. That was never a part of the motion.
But, but I didn't get a chance to, the question before we voted. When he, he just, I, I mean, when he said make the motion and the second, there was no, never no discussion.
Commissioner Booth, we'd be glad to take that as an individual item if you'd like to, to say, um, I mean, again, our recommendation to you would be that you lift the hiring freeze. Uh, we've had some conversation about that. I think the finance officer made that presentation last month, because the question was asked, have you saved money based on that? And, and she wasn't able to demonstrate to y'all that we felt like we did. Uh, every position that has come back to the board has been approved to be filled. Um, so, you know, our recommendation to you would be to, to lift the freeze. But if the board doesn't want to do that, then just tell us you don't want to do that, and tell us when you, when you want to lift it.
Hey, well, hold on one second then. Well, let's, let's go ahead and clear up what we've just done. The motion passed for the plan implementation, four to two. And so now we'll, we'll deal with what you want to do. Yeah, option two, option two. And so now we'll, we'll, if you are so inclined to make a motion to, uh, keep the hiring freeze, we can do that now.
The reason I said that is, is, is when you, when you, when we released the hiring freeze, is that for everybody?
It, it would be for everybody, um, but you, you don't have any, as far as I know, there aren't, and the HR directors here, I don't know that we have any vacant positions that you haven't already approved to be filled. The, the register deeds had a position. Y'all have approved to fill that. Uh, the tax office has a position. I'm not aware, we've been, we've not been notified today of anybody who has a vacant position right now. Uh, but, but remember, let's go back to the point. The budget ordinance has a specific number of positions for each department. We are not allowed to exceed that, no matter what.
The reason I asked that question, we'll be a lampoon all over the county that we defunded five positions for the sheriff. It, that's the reason I asked that.
Um, I, I think it's, I think if, if you go back and, and, and look, um, the Sheriff's Office received the same amount of funding that they received in the prior year. Um, the Sheriff, the Sheriff's Office made some adjustments in their salaries with the understanding that they would bring us a flat budget back. In order to do that, they adjusted what they needed to do to bring that back flat. Um, and the board simply agreed to it. Um.
I will draw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
No, wait a minute. Hold on.
Well, we, we would need some direction from the board, since you brought it up.
I think basically what, what we're doing is they will still bring them to us as they come, and we will, we will say yes or no. Then you have a hiring freeze on, if that's the case.
But now. Just for our clarity, I was thinking that's what the board was going to take this as an item to say, yes, we, we're, we're, we're voting to lift the hiring freeze, or no, we want to keep it on. We just need direction on that. Our recommendation to you.
Commissioner Booth raised the issue, I think, that if we lift the hiring freeze, does that mean the sheriff gets these five employees? And the answer is no.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That, the budget ordinance specifically reads the specific number of positions.
I, I, I think what, what we need to do then, if, if you want to do that, you're gonna have to have a motion that, that states that if you're gonna release the hiring freeze, it, it cannot exceed the number of, of positions, FTEs, that we had in our budget.
You could certainly make that clarification, but that's the budget ordinance, and we cannot exceed that. But I'm, I'm happy if you want to say that as well, but we cannot exceed that, even if you said hire away.
Really a budget document. What, not to exceed this, a, a budget FTEs.
Which is, does not include, does not include the five. This is gonna come back, guys. He's gonna be running in the door as soon as you do this. You, you need to make it crystal clear that the sheriff does not get the five employees he wants. Is that a part of your motion?
My motion was that not to exceed the, the FTEs that's in the budget this year, and they are not in the budget this year.
The five employees are not in the budget this year. All right.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, but I, I, I don't think I understand. You're lifting. Oh, yeah. You're lifting the hiring freeze except for the, the Sheriff's Department?
No, no, no. He can, if somebody quit, he can hire him tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just the ones that was, we, we not gonna go over the. We're not gonna go over the numbers that we passed in the budget this year until July first, or whenever.
But, but under the guidance in which we have given as policymakers, um, I do believe, and listen to the, the manager's understanding of that guidance, the hiring freeze that we, we have instilled, as weak as it may be, they still have to come to us and ask us, can we hire this person like we did to fill Cindy Ambrose's position today?
No.
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 No, not if you take hiring freeze off.
That's correct. Essentially, what we asked the board to do back before, when we were anticipating impacts of COVID, we said, we asked the board to put a hiring freeze on, so that you could look at each position, uh, and, and maybe there'd be some opportunities not to do some things. Um, what we're saying is, based on how that has progressed over the, the last year or so, or less than a year, um, we don't see that that has been an advantage and saved any money. The board has approved those moving forward, because obviously it felt like you needed those positions. Um, so we're just recommending that you lift that hiring freeze and allow departments to fill those positions when they come vacant without having to come back to the board, as long as they don't exceed the, the number of FTEs that are listed in the budget ordinance, because you can't change the budget, budget ordinance without the board approving a change in the budget ordinance. It's, it's a law.
That's the way I understood it, what he just said, what the manager said. Okay.
I, I mean, that's for anybody. If, if a deputy quit after this is instituted, let them hire him. I don't want that hamspring them. It's not fair.
I do. I'd like to keep doing that. Not, not just for the Sheriff's Department, for every department.
You want a hiring freeze?
Okay, we have a, have a motion in a sec.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor of releasing the hiring freeze, raise your right hand. All opposed? We have a wash.
I had a plan on telling you that I was gonna put them all together. The chairman received a letter from Sheriff Coleman, and, uh, we'll ask the clerk to the board, uh, if you, do you have a copy of that letter? No, I, I have a purpose for, for asking. If you would, uh, read that letter in two or a.
Chairman Waters, I would like to congratulate you on being elected as chairman. You bring a level of professionalism and experience that will be a breath of fresh air. I feel your demeanor will be a calming influence for the board and will benefit the citizens of Beaufort County. I would also like to take the opportunity to offer some information that hopefully will shed some light on a topic that has been a source of contention between the Office of the Sheriff, the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Education. The five full-time positions that were defunded in this year's budget have caused a substantial amount of strain on our ability to maintain the level of services that we have been providing for the last several years. I really would prefer not to get into what caused the defunding of the positions again, but the reality is that we have been dealing with the aftermath of that decision for over a year now, even as more information on individual stakeholders' agendas and motivations are just recently making its way to the surface. We have been using school resource officers for other law enforcement tasks for as long as I can remember. We just have been using these deputies at times when school is not in session, nights, weekends, and holidays, et cetera. When it became clear that we would be held to a hundred and two positions instead of a hundred and seven positions, we had to formulate a plan to take care of transports and other law enforcement tasks that have dramatically increased over the last few years. We decided that the only plan that made sense was to occasionally use a school resource officer. officer during times when school would be in session to complete a task. To do so, we would need to amend or withdraw from the memorandum of understanding between the sheriff's office and the school board. The letter that I sent to the superintendent, superintendent was simple and accurate. Since the letter was sent, I have had one face-to-face meeting with the superintendent, and for whatever reason, the information has been interpreted several different ways by many different people. While the interpretation that the superintendent passed on to the school board was literally acceptable, based on what was written and said, it was certainly not accurate. I never told the superintendent that I wanted to remove all our school resource officers from the schools. I did tell him that they needed to investigate alternative options for school security. That statement should have been clear and obvious to understand because I have absolutely no say and no vote on how many full-time personnel I have each year. That number is set by the Board of Commissioners. There has been some discussion about the positions that were defunded. Questions have been asked and opinions have been stated. I have been asked if the defunded positions were reinstated, if we would renegotiate another memorandum of understanding with Beaufort County Schools. The honest answer to that question is that we cannot, we can negotiate another MOU once we know the level of funding and positions that we will have going into next year's budget. We need a minimum of 107 positions to maintain the level of services that we had in last year's budget. We have additional needs that can be negotiated during the regular budget process, but the question at hand can be answered by funding us to the level that we have been for two years leading up to 2022, I'm sorry, 2020 and 2021. The county manager and at least one commissioner has suggested that we, Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, Beaufort County Schools, and both Board of Commissioners meet to discuss this issue and attempt to come to a solution that works for each entity. My office is willing to participate in this endeavor. I feel that my deputies in my office are the best option available for Beaufort County Schools, and I want my deputies in our schools. Unfortunately, my opinion is just an opinion without the support by way of funding from the school board through the Board of Commissioners. Once again, congratulations on being elected to chairman of the board, and I look forward to working with you. Respectfully, Sheriff Ernie Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, uh, as stated earlier, this was Commissioner Waters' item, but I, I wanted everyone to, to be able to hear what the, the letter stated, and now we are entertaining any thoughts from any, uh, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman. This, this letter is gross, grossly inaccurate. It was the sheriff who defunded himself. He is the one that came in and said, if you will let me spend money two, a year or two years ago, then I will bring you a budget that is flat with what the budget was this year. And he chose to eliminate jobs rather than to eliminate other wasteful expenses that he was carrying on with. So then the sheriff comes and he has a, says he has a surplus of money from positions that he didn't fill because he always has a fat budget, because this board always gives him a fat budget. And he took $200,000 and rewarded his favorite people with 10, $12,000 raises. And now he is, he is trying to play the game that we are defunding him. The simple truth of the matter is Coleman, to be a person who supposedly deals in facts and truths, is far, far from facts and truth. He def, defunded himself. The board, this board of commissioners did not do that. He did it to himself. And like a three-year-old, he is demanding that we give him his candy back. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner Walker?
I happen to know that tomorrow night, the Board of Education will be presented with several alternatives to this, and they are going to choose one of them, and I think it's probably the best thing. And what they will be doing probably is going to a private SRO-type security. In, in some of the earlier versions of this memorandum of understanding, the school was concerned that some of these SROs would be pulled when needed, and certainly I understand emergencies. But one thing that came back, blacked out by the sheriff's department was that the SRO did not have to tell the principal that they were leaving. And I think that is just an absolute, that's terrible that, you know, they don't know that they have security there at any one time. So, um, if they go to a private means of security, well, that would, that would solve that problem also. The sheriff would be getting a whole lot of people that were no longer needed in the SRO that, than he has to pick of the litter of who he wants to keep, provided he can do the budget thing. So, um, there's a lot to this that I think gets fixed by the Board of Education going to a private security firm, much like we do with the courthouse. And so I'm going to be doing all I can to, to help the school board do just that.
Commissioner Dethridge? Are we going to be kept in the loop on this since we're paying for it? I mean, the money does come through us. We, do we have to approve that private consortium, a group? We do not?
No, actually, the, the contract would be between the school system and the, the private entity, whoever.
Right, but do we sanction that contract?
No, you're not a party to that contract. You, you have nothing to do with that contract.
We do not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But the funding does flow through us.
You provide funding for them to do, do that. And of course, the Board of Commissioners, several years ago, raised taxes, a penny, to fund SROs across the entire county. So there was a policy decision by the board to do that. You, so, you know.
That was before I became a commissioner. They got objected to it. But I, not that I object to SROs, I object to just a carte blanche SRO provision. Um, okay, I'd just like to mention one other thing since we're talking about this letter, this glowing letter. Where, I have a question. Where could we meet? The commissioners, the school board, and members of the sheriff's department? Is there, I mean, in the age of COVID, is there a room, a place big enough we could all meet and still provide cameras and the public?
Yeah.
What we're doing? Community college? Now, is that a moot point since the school board's already moving in a direction? As they are meeting right to do so, as we have just heard?
I don't want to meet.
Is there any reason to meet if the school board is moving in a certain direction? I mean, if we have no bearing whatsoever on what the school board does in this response, in this instance, why would we even care? I mean, it's like trying to close the door after the horses have bolted, right? Those one-horse ponies are gone now.
All right. But I, I do want to say this, it is, it is my understanding, going to a private security company, there will be certified gun-carrying officers. They will be certified according to, uh, standards. Uniform, yes. So. Brian?
So, i- if that is, just for the board's understanding, if, if that is the case that the school board decides to do that, then this board will need to decide how it is going to, whether the school board pulls out of its fund balance to pay for the re, to pay for the remaining part of the year, because you, you've allocated funds to the sheriff's office for that service, and I'm, I'm guessing you wouldn't have both of those folks in place at the same time. Statutes do allow you to claw back money from the sheriff's office mid-budget year if, if you, if you so choose to do that. But the board needs to think about that because obviously the school board's going to come to you and say, if that's what they choose, the school board's going to come to you and say, we've got to fund this, and we don't, we either have the means to fund it or we don't have the means to fund it, and they may look to you to fund it based on your previous policy that you wanted SROs in schools. So just be aware that that's probably coming.
Commissioner moved.
Mr. Manager, uh, to, to Commissioner Walker first, when is all this going to take faith, take place that they instituted these, uh, private officers?
They're going to learn about it tomorrow night.
They're going to learn about it tomorrow night, so when is, when is effective they're going to put them in place?
Well, I think it's going to be effective according to one of the letters that the sheriff gave to Mr. Cheeseman, the superintendent. And I, I, it seemed like it was in February that this would cease on, maybe it was February? I don't remember.
Well, well, if, if Mr. Manager, if that's, if that's the case, what Mr. Walker is talking about, then I'm going to look at this, well, I'm just one person, I'm not like the rest of them. I would love to look at the clawback because we, we, we raised that money. We took one penny of taxes from the people of this county to support SRO officers in schools. And if there's, if they go to a private entity, then I think it's no more than fair for the money to fall who's doing the job at the school.
I, I agree. The sheriff shouldn't be allowed. Sheriff shouldn't be allowed to keep that money because this is a game he's playing, and it is his budget. He abandoned the positions, so he abandoned the funding for the positions.
So just remember, you don't specifically fund the, the school board for SROs. They get grant funding. That grant funding actually flows through us as well. But those revenues go to support the sheriff's office positions. So, um, so you've essentially already paid for that service. So you would, so in that, either the school board would need to say, we'll eat that difference, okay? Hear me out. We'll eat that difference between then and July 1, because July 1, we're going to come ask you for that funding. Or they would say, we want you to fund this now, which would make the board decide whether you wanted to pull it from your fund balance and pay it up until July 1, or if you wanted to say, no, we're going to immediately claw, claw that back and then let the ramifications be what the ramifications are. So just to be thinking.
Well, excuse me. According to what you're saying, and I got a horror of folks losing their jobs, I really do. So this means if they walk away, there's going to be 14 young men and women over there that don't have a job. Is that possible?
I, I think that if you claw that money back out of personnel, um, based on that change, then yes, because the way the budget is set up, they can't, they cannot move money from operations into personnel without the board approving it. Now, you know, whether, whether you want to do that, whether, they could come back to you and say, in order for us not to lose those positions, we'll, we'll cut our operations back or something. I, I don't know. I mean, they, and, but the board would have to approve that, moving that money. But if, but the way the budget is set up, the way this, the way the board specifically set that budget up for them, and it's within statute, is that they have personnel and benefits, they have operations, and they have capital, and they're not allowed to exceed any of those funds within those specific categories or move money in between those funds without the board approving it. God, no.
I would guess that you're not going to find 14 people overnight that have been trained and are prepared to go and fill those positions. So I would think that maybe out of this, the school board gives us a timeframe for this. I, I, and I think the sheriff is committed to keep them, resources in the schools until the end of the school year, if that's what they.
That's what it says here.
Yeah.
Commissioner Richardson?
Uh, well, you know, the school board needs officers, so these officers are probably going to go work for the school board for the most part. And then the sheriff will, he always has vacancies, so I don't see a big shift here of people running around without jobs and that sort of thing. While I have sympathy for this, my purpose as a county commissioner is to provide services, not provide jobs to people, so. But it is ludicrous for anyone to think that I will ever vote to allow the sheriff to keep that money because the money is appropriated for a specific purpose, to provide SROs to the school. So he loses the money. This board has sat here and let this, this sheriff power grab and power grab and power grab and steal your money long enough. Yes, I said, the sheriff stole your money. He's doing it over and over, and he's trying to do it again this time. I'll never vote for that.
Commissioner Dethridge? Um, the way I understand it, and I'm, uh, preface what I'm getting ready to say, that I have different ideas about how to protect public buildings, including schools. But the way I understand it is, the sheriff negotiated an agreement outside of the county. We are not a party to that agreement, although we're obligated to fund that agreement, even if the money is passing through us and it be state funds. So therefore, we are responsible for that money, 100%. Now, my opinion is, we are obligated to the school system for whatever the agreement was ratified on our behalf. I would like to state this, while I, I say that we're obligated, future, for future reference, and we talked about this last month, we should ourselves negotiate every contract where the people's money is spent. The sheriff has negotiated here, we've had other instances where there were negotiate, well, twice, the sheriff negotiated with the Pitt County people, and we were spending a lot, spent a lot of money to house those prisoners over there, and we were out of the loop, 100%. Uh, so that's two instances the sheriff spent a lot of money and has been responsible for a lot of money with us not having any say. Now, I think we should, since we are the taxing authority in this county, we are the oversight authority, we are the budget authority, and we are the policy authority in this county, we should have total say on any contracts that we enter into on behalf of the people, their money. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, we will, uh, we will move forward.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with you. I think that, uh, this is a great chance to fix the shortcomings of the previous agreement. And, um, so, you know, we won't be having a MOU that has blacked out lines or anything. We'll, we'll put in it what we want in it, and we'll agree. That is where we will have a meeting with the school board, uh, maybe, and talk about what this thing's going to look like in the end. And it may not happen as quick as we think it will. There may be a lag time, and, you know, we'll figure that out.
Um, a question for the board now. The fire chief from Blunts Creek is here, and he has the information that Commissioner Richardson desires, so at this time, I will ask the board, would they be willing to add him to the agenda till we can hear from him then?
I'm opposed to adding him to the agenda. I want to see the paperwork for the deal that's been made. He comes in here and he's going to talk to you, and you're going to say, oh, yeah, everything sounds good, we're going to vote for it. I'm telling you, it's a, it's an odd form of financing that is not to their advantage, not to the county's advantage, not to the taxpayers' advantage. There's something going on here. All I want is the paperwork. We can approve it once we see the paperwork. And I'm opposed to putting them on the agenda tonight.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, then we put them on the agenda tonight.
Is there a second?
Say.
Discussion? Hood, would you be agreeable to put them last, be the last people tonight?
What's it got to do with it?
Well, you'd have a chance to maybe look at the paperwork.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and look at the paperwork. Somebody throws paperwork on this table and I'm supposed to make a decision on it. I want to sit down and study the paperwork. You can't understand the paperwork just because somebody jams something in front of you. This board has been over this over and over again, of somebody comes in and throws something on the table, and Stan, you were just complaining about this and says, oh, yeah, you got to vote for this. No, I don't got to vote for it. There's something going on here. There's a reason that everybody is resisting us getting the paperwork.
Well, in defense of that, Hood, you, you do study stuff, and I, I appreciate that, so.
All right, all in favor of adding the chief to the agenda? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Four-two, it carries. Chief?
Vice Chairman, if I may just say, as Chief Williams is here to answer any questions, Chief Williams originally dropped off two documents with the county office in his thought was going to be a, a pretty simple, standard signature kind of thing. When those documents came to the manager, he met with me about it. One document is the document in which you have in front of you. The second document, on its front page, had a paper that legal counsel would sign saying that they were legal counsel for Blunts Creek Fire Department. And, uh, we did not feel like we could do that as, the county attorney being able to do that because he's not the attorney for Blunts Creek. So that's why that document was not provided for you. In that document, it does have some of the requested information that, that you have. So there are copies of that. Chief Williams is here now with his complete book of any. Chief Williams is here now with his complete book of any and everything that has to do with this lease agreement, and I'll turn it over to him to answer any questions. But I will give you that second form now.
Chief Williams, the first question I'll ask you, is this a time-sensitive matter?
It is. The bank would like to have it in 30 days, which we're already into that because we had to wait for the commissioners' meeting tonight.
This I see go back to 11, back to last year.
We've been discussing it with the bank since November. They've been giving us...
What's going to happen if you don't get this? How many houses are going to burn down?
We replaced a 1992 truck that was not meeting our needs anymore. So the uptick in technology and the new truck will help us greatly, and it'll also help our ISO rating, which directly impacts the homeowners' price for all the citizens in our area. Right now, we hold a six. Without that truck, it would drop, which means more cost on the homeowner, because we've already sold the old truck. So we're actually down a truck, and we actually have the new truck in our station. It's here. This was just paperwork that the bank said was non-significant. It's never been a problem before. We actually did this, I believe, maybe eight years ago, the same process with the board. It was not a problem then. It was a simple consent sign, and we left. We're here today. So we have done this process with you before.
Any commissioner have anything?
Is the bank, as a lessor, are they the holders of the property?
Yes. Until we pay it off.
Oh, okay.
Until we pay it off.
This is just a lien?
Yeah.
Okay. They don't actually own the property, though?
No. I mean, if we quit paying on it, they'd come get the truck.
Yeah, they'll own it then. Yeah.
If we don't pay for it, they come and get it.
Who are you buying it from, or is it municipal list?
C.W. Williams in Rocky Mount.
C.W. Williams. Did you go out and get bids?
Yes, we got an E1 bid, a Rosenbauer bid, and there was a bid from another one.
This was your best?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you provide us with those bids?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to have them.
Chairman, is there a motion in order? Make a motion that we approved the truck.
I have a motion, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion?
I have one thing to say. I'm not going to vote for this because you slapped some paper down on my desk and told me to approve it. And I don't do business that way, and I've told you that before. It's not in the county's interest.
Can I make a comment to Mr. Richardson? Oh, no, it ain't nothing bad. It just ain't, I promise, ain't nothing bad. Blunts Creek Fire Department is an open book when it comes to our financials. Anything the board or the county wants to see, all you have to do is call me, and I'll sit down with you at any point in time. I'm not here to try to hide nothing from the county, the citizens. We're here to do what's best for our community. So please, if anybody in here wants to see our books, by all means, give me a call.
Commissioner Walker.
I'm a retired firefighter, and I have no problem with this whatsoever. I'm ready to vote.
All right, all in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Five-one.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Anybody who wants to see it can come see it, too.
Commissioner Richardson? We'll begin with Brendon Hamilton.
I have not. We reached out to the sheriff's office and asked them for an update, and we have not received anything from them.
If the sheriff doesn't provide us with something by the next meeting, I think we need to go directly, deal with those people directly, because this thing has dragged on and on due to the sheriff's inefficiency, and I get the impression they really don't care, and we're going to have to pursue this ourselves.
Your next item.
Well, exercise will be a separate item, but I'll get into it right after that. The jail door repairs, at the last commissioners' meeting, you were asked to approach the sheriff about the status of the jail doors repairs, if there were any problems with their operation, et cetera, et cetera. What do you have?
Well, first of all, a report from the public works director, the county engineer, she says, "No changes during the month of December. All installed equipment continues to function properly, and only four mechanical locks to mechanical spaces need to be replaced, and we're trying to get that resolved this month." The letter that I, the email that I sent to Chief Deputy Rose addressed the request from the board. If you'd like me to read it, I'd be glad to.
Yes, I would.
It said, "Chief Deputy Rose," and this was, it said, "At a regular meeting on December the 7th, 2020, the board of commissioners, by consensus during a discussion regarding the jail door locking project, asked that I send a formal request to the sheriff's office seeking confirmation of the completion of the project from the sheriff's office, and asking that if any outstanding issues were present or arise, that they be forwarded to the county maintenance department in writing. Per our discussion last week, it is my understanding that you agree that the project is substantially completed and accepted for operation. You did indicate that minor operating issues are being addressed appropriately by the vendor, and that you believe they are being responsive to requests during this ongoing warranty period. Please let me know if any issues arise in the future with the jail doors that need to be addressed either under the warranty period or after the warranty period ends. I am of the understanding that the sheriff's office has or will put in place a contract with the installing vendor to perform preventive maintenance on the doors and respond to any issues that arise with the doors in the future." When I sent that email, Chief Deputy Rose called me and came by. He didn't respond by email, but he did come by and say, "Yes, essentially, I agree with that." And his question was, "Why are you sending that to me?"
Well, the question, and I can answer his question. I'm asking, making the request because the last time, there was no warning when the sheriff shut the jail down, that these things were disasters, and their truthfulness is what's at issue here. And I still am suspect, but I accept your report. I think it's a good report. To me, it says there are no issues at this time with the locking mechanisms or the jail doors. And if we find out different, we're going to know that somebody has been acting true to form, and that is not telling us the truth.
Your next item.
Okay, this item has to do with exercise. I'm not sure that some of the newer commissioners, or even some of the older commissioners, or even some of the staff, understand what the long story is on exercise in the jail. Now, I was told that all the issues having to do with sunlight and exercise in the jail had been essentially resolved when we did these last repairs to the jail and put a light down there or something, or so sunlight could get into the jail, and that took care of it. Now, we have had several lawsuits over the years about the jail and about exercise in the jail. All of those have been turned over to the county's attorneys. We have won all of those in one form or another. Either they were dismissed, they were forgotten, they got old, they weren't pursued, whatever, but they all went away. And I was really surprised when someone sent me a letter that the county attorney had written that basically says, "We're guilty as hell." This letter that the county attorney sent out, or memorandum, or whatever he wants to call it, to members of the Balfour County Jail Committee, indicates that we have had people trying to solve the problem that doesn't exist. For all practical purposes, the problem of exercise in the jail doesn't exist, because we have beat it legally every time it has come up. So why do we want to resurrect this problem and make it an issue? The secret to the jail success in this item and any other item is putting prisoners through the jail as fast as you can. We're down, I can remember when we had 120-something prisoners down there. We're down to 42 prisoners, with two or three prisoners out of county. And why is that? Because of COVID, essentially, because people's back was put to the wall, and they had to solve the problem. We have seven prisoners down there that have been there six months or longer. That's 180 days. The district attorney tells me that the one that's been down there three years on a murder charge is the next one to be tried. His trial was supposed to start today, but because of this and that within the court system, it's going to be about two weeks before that trial will take place. After that, there's somebody that's been in there like two years, and then one year, and then four people have been in there like six months. That's the length of it. We don't have a problem down there with this. And what troubles me about this is that someone went to the county attorney, and that he generated this document, which lays the law down to us on a problem that doesn't exist. And if this document is ever subpoenaed by somebody, then we are going to lose. This is a condemnation of 20 years of work with the jail. I'm also hearing rumors, the emails that this thing went out with go to people that I've never heard of before, supposedly having an interest in the jail. So what I'm saying is, who has the authority to direct the county attorney to do anything?
Us.
This board, through the manager. So I want to caution the county attorney that if you're taking orders from anybody other than this board, you're in trouble. I'm offended by this thing with all the years that I've been here, and all the sessions that I've sat through, talking about exercise in the jail, and we've turned it over to our attorneys, and we beat it every time. And now somebody writes something that says, "You're guilty as dogs," written by some member of the jail committee. I understand it was Commissioner Revholtz. So if you're carrying a campaign on about exercise in the jail, you are not doing service to this county. I don't know where I got it. That's why I'm asking you in public. You're denying it. Is that right? You didn't ask, you didn't ask the county attorney to do anything? Then who asked you to do this?
What is it? I haven't seen it.
Here, pass this. Pass it down.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak just a moment?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, I haven't seen this letter, and I haven't seen it at all. So I'm not familiar with the so on and so forth. I did notice as I was passing it over, it had a November 10 date, 2020. So quasi recent, but I'm not familiar with it. I don't know if you guys are. Thank you.
I have some more copies here if people haven't seen it. Say so, I'll give you a copy. What it said, you cite 38 CFR and say, "In the sense, under the current circumstances, moving candidates will comply. I suggest you seek Mrs. Bryan." Do we have her heart to do anything? Because when she was here, I realize a lot of people put a lot of confidence in her, but there was a lot of things that weren't true that came out of Mrs. Bryan. Anybody want a copy of this? You got it?
I got my last copy.
I request you read that letter to the commissioner, and I think it will speak for itself. That's not what you, that is not what you represented it to be.
Well, I'd be glad to read it. Oh, yeah, let me get my glasses, so I can see.
If you need that mic.
To members of the Balfour County Jail Committee, scheduled to meet November 18, 2020. Jail Committee requested me to craft a recommendation for consideration for moving inmates out of jail to other facilities that are recreation compliant in the event an inmate will be in for an extended period of time. To begin, I advise you that I am not versed in this subject. I am aware we have a functionally borderline jail, shouldn't have said that, which the county has endeavored to keep operational. I am also aware lawsuits against the county and its sheriff for failure to provide sufficient exercise space and facilities. I believe these suits have been dismissed without judgment or adverse decisions being entered due to the lapse of time, for the most part. These suits were handled by outside counsel, not by me personally. Back about 40 years ago, I was the appointed list for several years and had on a number of occasions to go to the jail and interview clients I had been ordered to represent. Back then, it was not a place you wanted to stay in longer than absolutely necessary. It was and is tight and closed quarters. Secondly, you have a preeminent person in Catherine Bryan come and talk to you about the jail. She is well aware of the shortcomings, and I think she would be able to reasonably provide you with the recommendation you seek. About all I can say is, I know the federal regulations require, and that's underlined, that pretrial inmates shall, underline, be provided the following recreational opportunities: one hour daily of outside recreation, weather permitting, or two, two hours daily indoor recreation. Recreational equipment shall be available, including books, table games, and television. Under the current circumstance, moving inmates periodically to complying facilities makes sense. I suggest you seek from Mrs. Bryan her recommendations in this regard.
Commissioner Richardson, I know what this is. I know exactly what this is. In our last jail committee meeting, we had a discussion how to circumvent the whole thing about exercise. I think it was a period of time, if an inmate was in your facility a certain amount of time, then you had to provide them these services. So the conversation was, how can we move people from our facility to another facility to circumvent that time period? That's, I think this is how this has come up. It really had nothing to do with our facility, but pretty much making sure that we circumvented the thing where you could say they were not getting the opportunity for exercise, because once they left our facility and went to someone else's facility, that cleared it out.
Well, back to, back to the Hood Richardson plan is, you don't keep them in there long enough for this to become an issue. And we very rapidly moving into that at this point in time. Now, this thing was circulated to some people that I've never, never heard of. I never thought they had an interest in the jail at all. So one of the things I keep wondering is, what's going on in the background? The jail committee, like all committees, is advisory to the Board of County Commissioners. The jail committee doesn't have the authority to ask a lawyer to do anything. You got to come to the commissioners. He works for the board. He doesn't work for the jail committee. And this goes, gets back to what I keep complaining about. Not everybody on the board knows everything that's going on. The stuff's held back, it's kept in places, and then all of a sudden, something's thrown on your table like buying a fire engine. "Oh, everything's okay, all you got to do is prove this."
Cut your mic off a minute. We were wholeheartedly what you were saying, and we all are guilty of that, I think, except me, I don't do it. But you passed out these letters, and I'm sitting right beside Mr. Walker. You didn't give me one, you gave it to him. Stan, well, not Stan, you. Stan gave him one, but you gave him one before the meeting started. Am I correct? Bingo.
I told him I would. Well, I figured everybody knew about it. And see, that makes, I'm making my point, and that is, there's a lot of stuff going on around here that the rest of the board doesn't know about. And when you start hiring lawyers...
Let me say this. The jail committee has at no time implemented anything. As a matter of fact, when we were having this particular discussion, it was simply to find out information and then bring it back to the board as a whole. At no time has this jail committee decided to do anything on its own. At no time has this jail committee decided to do anything on its own.
Well, when you ask, when you ask the attorney to generate this document, you did. And this is a damning document as far as I'm concerned for any future legal activity that takes place. More people need to be thinking.
Commissioner DeFricke.
Uh, yeah, and yeah, tonight's the first time I've seen this letter as well. And I thank you, Hood, for getting it to me, along with everybody else. And, and to the attorney, God bless you. I remember, I've been a commissioner since 1994. I remember the jail years ago, it was, it was pretty bad. It's a lot better now. Jail's in much better shape. It's clean, it's, you know, you can say what you want about sheriff, but it's got a nice looking jail. Jail's the best it's been since I've been a commissioner, probably the best it's ever been. And right now, because of Hood's fine work, we're moving people through there. And I, and in accordance with our district attorney, he's doing a great job.
He's doing a great job.
Y'all are working together, hand in glove. We got like 43 people in there now.
Yeah, 42.
Forty-two people in there now. I remember we used to have about 85, maybe over 85, 120.
120, 120.
We're moving people out of there. And, and once this COVID is over, that jail is, is, we're gonna move people out to, more. I don't think people should languish in jail. I, I think we should have hardened criminals in jail and the other people should get out as much as possible. Here go, let's not build a brand new jail now. I just got this tonight. I mean, you guys on the jail committee, working with the attorney, know a lot more than we do. I would like to say this, I've said it before, I was really glad we got rid of the solid waste committee. I don't think we need to have a bunch of committees. It's advisory, all this is advisory. These things don't need to be done amongst three people and then brought to us and this is what we think. We're, we're kind of the professionals, we've talked to professionals. You haven't, you know, we're saving you time. Do what we think you should do. I mean, we saw that when we needed to move prisoners and we ended up negotiating with Pitt County. And the math is gonna be weird. Once it gets looked at, and I think there needs to be a reckoning on the math, I guarantee we paid close to $200 a night for effective use of those cells. Now, that was, we were told we had to vote right then, it was special call meeting, we didn't know anything. That cost us a lot of money. I remember, I remember Ed, you said, I thought, at least it didn't cost a million dollars. You thought it was gonna cost a million dollars. Well, I was hoping for a whole lot less than a million dollars. A million dollars is a lot of money to people of Beaufort County. So we need to know this kind of stuff. And if there's a committee that's doing this, this, and they're doing it on behalf of us, who, as we work as a governing body for the, on behalf of the people of Beaufort County, we need to know the same things you guys know when you know it. All right? So this is a great example of such right here. I motion, I, I motion right now, we get rid of the jail committee.
I'll second it. You don't need a new jail.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. And now we'll go for discussion. And I would say this first. This board is, is getting to the point where if we don't like a certain committee, the first thing we do is, is pop up that, uh, we don't need that committee anymore. You have people who are investing their time and doing work and I for one will not vote with you because, and then to just come and arbitrarily get rid of a committee because it doesn't function the way that you want it to function, I do not agree with.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me and let me.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
And I, I, I hope and I pray that three other commissioners will, will agree with me that we don't need to keep setting this precedent that anytime we don't like a board, we're gonna get rid of it.
Mr. Chairman, your words duly noted. I would like to pull back that motion and, and replace that with another motion that we get rid of all committees. Would you amend your second?
I don't think they'll vote for that.
I don't think they're gonna vote for the other either, Hood.
Well, it's okay, but I'd rather, I'd rather stay focused. I'd rather stay focused.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I will not pull back my motion if I can't get an amendment from my, on my second.
I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't do it.
Any other comments? Hearing done, all in favor of Commissioner DeFricke's motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Uh, motion failed, two for.
It seemed like a good idea at times.
Good for, it was a good idea.
What kind of school budget session?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be brief with this, because I got two guys sitting over here that, that, whose, whose opinion is influenced, heavily influenced. The, uh, the school superintendent is jacking us around. We're into the fourth month now of me asking for financial information. And the only reason he's not giving it is because he knows that this board doesn't, doesn't support my request. Well, if you're a taxpayer in Beaufort County and your children have been sitting at home in front of a television set supposedly getting educated, there's been a lot of money in a lot of different places, from the CARES Act, from Beaufort County gives the school system about 17 million dollars a year. All I'm asking the school superintendent to do is to give us, is, all I'm asking the school superintendent to do is to give us the figures on the federal budget, his federal budget, he has a federal budget, his state budget, and his county budget. And he refuses to do that. And as long as this board is as weak as it is and sits here and won't back me up to look after your money, then we're gonna keep doing just what we're doing, wasting a lot of your money. So if one of you guys over there wants to make a motion and all of us vote on it for the superintendent to produce the information, he has to do it once we start into the budget session. He doesn't have a choice. The statutes tell him he has to do it. But right now, you're getting taken advantage of, the taxpayers are getting, taken advantage of, and you don't know how they're spending this money. And your children are not getting educated.
Commissioner Walker.
I want to share a little information. I, that Mr. Chiefsman did come one meeting and was taken off the agenda because it was a full agenda. It was, I think, the month of November when the sheriff came in the back door. And so he was prepared then to share that information. And since then, the finance director has had a bout of COVID, some sickness, and some other things. And, uh, and I, and I know that's for a fact. So, and, and he's the guy that pulls this stuff together. So I think you're gonna get it. I just don't, it's, it's just didn't happen this month and I, it may, will happen next month if you so request it. But I don't think he's, he's hiding this stuff.
Well, with all, all due respect, Commissioner, I would say to the school system, if they're that weak in what they're doing and they don't have a second in command that's capable of doing what this other guy can do, they've got some serious management problems.
Oh, oh, thanks, Commissioner. I, I'm not heavily influenced. He, he might be. But I want, but I want to remind, I want to remind you, I want to remind you of one thing. And I hope you, I hope you don't forget it. No one commissioner on this board have a weighted vote. If, if you ask for something, and you can go, you can go tomorrow and ask for it as a, as a, as a citizen. And, and I, I don't appreciate, because we don't do what, do what you want us to do, that you, you say we weak.
It is a weak board.
Well, I could say some different things about you. I mean, I mean, but I'm, but I'm a rise to a higher level than you are. But, 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 but just think about it. It, it's not only your way. There's, there's five, there's seven of us here. And if you don't get four votes, you're just chasing a ghost in the snow.
Financial information should be available regardless of who asks for it continuously. When you're, when you're handling 60, 70 million dollars a year and you're telling me that you've got such a weak financial system, you can't within a matter of days produce this information, I'm telling you, there's something wrong.
Go by the office tomorrow. Go by the office, if it's the law that he got to give it to you, go by the office tomorrow.
Commissioner Revoltz.
We all got, I think Katie's email that says he's gonna be here in February, that he's committed to do at the next meeting? Well, then you didn't look at your email, because it was.
It came out today, I, I got it as well.
Came out at 2:30.
But I left my office at 2:00. You didn't leave your phone with you?
Yeah, he doesn't have a smartphone.
You have a phone with you.
Okay, your next item, Commissioner Richardson, the lockdown and public policy.
Well, we've already, we've already. It said a lot of what can be said about the lockdown, but the lockdown is becoming more and more of a disaster and the public in general is becoming more and more of how abused they are by certain political leaders. The political aspects of the lockdown are essentially over with. They defeated President Trump, that's what they set out to do. In doing so, they've destroyed a lot of people, they've destroyed a lot of education. It's the first time in history that we have ever shut the entire government and everybody down. It's, there, there are, we know how to handle these things. Historically, pandemics have been handled with quarantines. But no, this one was done in a political way. It's the first political disease that we've ever had in the world, and it is a political disease. People are scared completely to death. I showed tonight with the aid of the health director, that the only people who are dying from this disease already have compromised health systems in one form or another. I talked to a man this week and he's, he's 50 years old. And he said, "I've got it." But he said, "I would not know that I had it unless I had been tested." Because he said, "I've got a little bit of a runny nose and I've got what I have when I have a very mild virus." It's people that are at risk that are dying from this. And I, I want to again say that Beaufort County has, has, I think we voted that the county should be opened up. Did we, you asked the clerk, did we send that to the governor?
Yes, sir. It was, it was that regular mail. Sorry.
Okay, well, that's all right. Can you make an inquiry to the Association of County Commissioners as to how many counties have done resolutions to open up? Because I think it's time that the public start becoming really a lot more aggressive than what they have been about this. Because the, the invention of the new strain, these viruses are mutating every day. There's a new strain every day. There will be another new strain after this strain if it means keeping things locked down so that these, these tyrants who are elected to public office can stay in control. There's always a new strain. How do you think we got this strain? It's a mutation from another strain. There'll always be another strain. So the public, the public needs to start demanding more from their elected officials. And I would say that the people that need protecting are the same people that the health director described tonight. And that is people that are over like 65 years old and that have compromised immune systems or health systems in one form or another. Other than that, these people should be allowed to go back to work and we should start doing business as usual because this nation is being destroyed with this. And, and to the, the, the business about, oh gee, isn't it wonderful that tax, that taxes are up, that they haven't been down? You're not gonna see bad taxes to, for another year or so. It takes one or two years for people to use up all of their resources and finally drop into poverty. You haven't seen the end of this thing yet. You're seeing the beginning of the bad part of this. So it's time for people to start becoming very, very aggressive with their elected officials.
Uh, I agree with most of what you said. There is one issue, one thing I take issue with. While comorbidities are a big part of what's killing people, there are some folks that are healthy that are dying. And it's very rare. It's, it's extremely rare. But it is happening. I have a friend who's older, who's in really good shape. I mean, he's a, he's a man's man. Doesn't smoke, hardly drinks, and never has smoked. And he's got it right now, as we speak. We're, we're watching him daily to make sure he's not gonna go to the hospital. And once you go to the hospital, you know, chances go down for some reason. I guess you're just that sick. Having said that, the premise of everything Hood said is correct. I mean, we live, we die. There's no guarantee you're gonna make it every day. And it's sad. But there are sicknesses that claim people. I mean, right now, we, we, you want to get your microphone there? Right, right now, flu is down tremendously. People are not dying from flu. They're dying from COVID and other things. Again, what the health director said, if it says he died of a heart attack and he, he tested positive for COVID, they're gonna say it was COVID. Why are they doing that? Hospitals get $35,000 if he goes to the hospital. That's why they're doing it. There's a financial incentive to claim COVID. Okay? Having said that, this is a very, very serious disease. And it, it will probably mutate into something worse at some point, but we're probably gonna kick it. Operation Warp Speed was a huge success. And what we're finding out is these guys think they can meet the challenge no matter how it mutates. Now, I would suggest we all go get our vaccines when they become available. I know I'm getting mine. Hood's gonna get his next week. Even if he gets COVID this week, he's gonna go get it next week. Well, I might have to wait a week for Hood. But we, we need to do what we need to do. We don't need to ever shut down this county again. The governor acted unconstitutionally by telling everybody where we're gonna shut down, he had emergency powers. Now, we're gonna speak to this with, later, with the resolution I have. But he acted unconstitutionally, a lot of governors did it, and it's just after 10 months of COVID, we're finding that the governors had acted unconstitutionally and continue to act unconstitutionally after the fear subsided. Those states are doing worse now than the states where the governors managed the problem and said, "Listen, go about your business, we're gonna open up, we're gonna try to do what's right, we're gonna make adjustments, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to keep going." This governor didn't do that and he scared a lot of people. And it was a political, you're right about it being a political disease. If nothing else, it was a political disease. All right, Commissioner. I will always refer to this president, should this imposter president become president, as COVID Joe. I warn you now.
Commissioner Richardson, your next item.
Thank you. I'll be brief. This is a short resolution. We have a new board. It's necessary to set a new policy on borrowing. And this, what this resolution says, whereas Beaufort County respects Article 5, Section 4 of the North Carolina Constitution that prohibits local government borrowing money without adoption of a bond resolution by the citizens authorizing such borrowing. And that means having a, a, an election to approve the bond. Whereas Beaufort County rejects backdoor methods to circumvent the constitutional restrictions on local government borrowing. And whereas a prior Beaufort County Board of Commissioners did seek a backdoor loan going around the state constitution, and for that reason, it is essential to set out the policy of the current board. Therefore, be it resolved that with the exception of those loans specifically described in Article 5, Section 4 of the North Carolina Constitution, it is the policy of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners that any major borrowing by the county shall only be done after it is approved by a bond referendum of Beaufort County citizens. That's a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Your mic, Commissioner Richardson.
I could speak to it if you don't mind. Uh, I, I would just like to say that we need, as a board, as a new board, we, we need, we need to pass this motion. We, we need to be resolved that we will never, ever try to go around the, of the people again for large sums of money. Now, I understand it's all, this is all conditioned upon large sums of money. But large sums of money for utilities, for the public good, for the public use, should be voted on by the public. Okay? That's what referendum's about. It's about money. It's not about whether you approve of it or not, it's whether you approve spending the money or not. Okay? So you have my vote.
My second. Any other, Commissioner? Commissioner Revoltz?
I, I took the opportunity to look up from the School of Government, their opinion on this issue. And I'm not clear as what that was. So David, can you comment on what you think on this?
Yes, I can say a couple of things. There are many sections to Article 5, one of which is Section 14, which is left out of all of this, never mentioned, or at least that I saw and here is never mentioned. And that section starts off by saying, this is called project development financing. Notwithstanding Section 4 of this article, the General Assembly may enact general laws authorizing any county, city, or town to define territorial areas in county, city, or town and borrow money to be used to finance public improvements. It goes on and on and it's, it's, it's that long, just that one section. I would, I would say that when I read this, this, this says a lot more than it really can say under the totality of, of, of this Article 5. That's about all I can say.
Well, one of the things that was pointed out, if I can find it again, was that if... Well, one of the things that was pointed out, if I can find it again, was that if Section 5 authorizes the county to go ahead and use, pass a bond, that you cannot do a referendum. That's illegal. Yes? I, Hood, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you are the chief legal expert here. Okay?
Well, I can read as well as anybody else can.
Okay, then you want to read this?
No, I'm not, I'm not listening to that because I know that. I don't know where you got it from. But I'm referring to the, the part of this resolution we refer to Article 5, Section 4, the parts that, that we have talked about in here, and it's a policy decision by the board.
Right.
Now, you didn't live in North Carolina at the time, so you didn't know, but Senator Bassnight had the Constitution amended, and he put a lot of stuff in here that was intended to circumvent the intent of Article 5, Section 4. And that's where, what you're reading, Brian, is a bunch of that stuff over there. I focus on the original intent of the Constitution of the state of North Carolina, which says you can't borrow money without the approval of the voters, and that's what I'm asking for a policy on. Now, if the board wants to go, say, "We don't care about the Constitution, and we're going to do whatever we want to," then you can do that.
Brian.
But you're on the spot. Tell the taxpayers where you are with the issue.
I'm just going to read through.
Yeah, Brian.
Mr. Vice Chairman, just, just to clarify the conversation, the Constitution does require that there be voter approval if the Board of Commissioners pledges the faith and credit of the local government as the backing for the borrowing. That means that you are pledging your taxing authority. The General Assembly has put in programs that allow you to not pledge the taxing authority. Those are things like revenue bonds, installment purchase financing, special obligation bonds, public development financing, so, and, and the, the legal opinion of the School of Government is that that's the only mechanism in which you are allowed, is if you do a GO bond, you have to have voter approval. But any other type of financing you do, you, you don't have to, and in fact, their opinion is you're not allowed to, because what they write is that, so, so here was, here was the piece of, it said, "Given the vocal opposition to the proposed soccer arena project by a number of the citizens, the unit citizens, could the governing body voluntarily decide to hold a voter referendum on the project or on the proposed capital financing method, even if it is not statutory required? The answer is likely no. A local government needs specific authority from the General Assembly to authorize a voter referendum. None of the authorized debt mechanisms other than the issuance of GO bonds authorizes a governing body to seek direct voter approval in the form of a voter referendum." So, there are mechanisms for you to borrow money in the, in the statute if you so choose to use them. If you choose to use a GO bond, you have to get voter approval. So, it's a policy decision by the board as to how you want to borrow money in the future.
I guess, the way I understand it, we got the general statute Bassnight plan, or you got the constitutional, let's let the people decide, referendum plan. I mean, I think what we're asking in this resolution authored by Commissioner Richardson is which plan you want to go with. I mean, it's that simple. A, the Bassnight plan. B, the people plan. Make a decision. All right, let's take the vote.
All right, we'll call it a question. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Bassnight plan. All right.
Commissioner Walker, live stream.
Last month, we had a discussion. Last month, we had a discussion on upgrading the video, and in that, I mentioned live streaming the video, and Commissioner Waters said he would be for that, and so I had it put on the agenda tonight. I think with COVID such as it is and the attendance that we have, I think it's something we need to look at. I know it's down here for decision, but I'm not coming to you with an amount of what it will cost. It may not cost anything. We may have the means to do it, and we don't even know. So, what I'm suggesting is that we get up with the people who put in the equipment to begin with and see if, what it's going to take to do that, and then go from there. And, and then, once we know that we can do it, to put it on the social platforms, the county website, and then let people know that it's there live, and then, you know, on a recurring basis after that, like it is now. So, I guess just your blessings to have the county manager proceed in contacting this guy to see if it can be done, and I know it can be done, but how it needs to be done.
We can, we can just simply direct the manager to follow through.
Yeah. Next time, ask the rest of them. Must have water stone ever won the vote.
My understanding is I think it only requires an encoder to, to be able to do that. So, we can certainly check, we'd be glad to check with, with the vendor to put it in, because I think they, they essentially set it up to do that with an encoder once you put it, and there may be an encoder back there, I don't know. The board has just never gone in that direction, and if they want to go in that direction, we'll certainly see.
In the brief conversation I had with him, it seems like he said, "Yeah, we're ready to do that now." So, we may have the ability to do that. So, call, quick conversation's all it takes.
Commissioner DeSantis.
Okay. This is going to be the resolution for concealed carry, which we talked about some time ago. I've adjusted this old resolution off, added a couple of things. Probably need to change one thing, I'll get to that in a minute, but we have a new board and a new year. I want to bring it forward. Now, I mentioned earlier that I have a different understanding, a different idea about how we need to protect our government buildings and our people. I'm a big Second Amendment guy. I think we use that whenever possible. Now, I understand we need security. I believe in SROs in schools, like high schools, for a lot of reasons. Number one, to find out if there's any drug activity, bus people, to, to, to keep people informed and break up flights, that kind of thing. But I also believe that the best way to ever discourage anyone that has ill intent towards our public, that they be lambs, that these people are wolves, and they will go after the weak, and if they know that this is a hardened place, a hardened building, they're going to be, be less likely to go against that place. Now, we, we talked before about, you know, you see our buildings, and you look up there on the right-hand side, you got a, you have a sign with a gun, circle and a cross going across, and a gun free zone, right? They laugh at that. That's called free fire zone for the wolves. Okay? Now, this motion, this motion that I'm looking for, for this resolution, is to harden our people, our employees, that they are duly licensed, they have concealed carry permit, they bring that permit in those buildings to protect themselves, and by virtue of protecting themselves, they will protect their fellow workmen. Now, they don't need to go tell people they got guns. I sure wouldn't tell anybody, "I got a gun, I had a gun." And I was on a county, in county business, but that's their business. And without any more ado, and you guys can go, fully free to come, come in on this later, it being a very important issue for protection. Right now, let me, let me, let me digress. Right now, we're talking about some crazy times that are going to happen in America. People are going to be hurt, and they're going to see government going on, taking their money, taking their tax off. They're losing property. They were giving people raises every year. They, they're going, they're going to feel like they're being left out. That's what some people are going to feel. Now, do you really want that person to have the ability to go in and shoot up one of our facilities? I don't. Nobody should ever take somebody else's life unless it's pure intent.
Stan.
You got something to say?
Hey, you're not saying anything. You didn't have your mic on.
Oh, well, I was speaking loudly, so I think I was being heard. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll digress again by reading the resolution.
Okay, that's good.
Resolution, "Support of Concealed Carry for Beaufort County Employees in Many of Beaufort County Governments' Buildings. Whereas the Beaufort County Commissioners support the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and the inherent right of lawful owners of firearms to lawfully carry in Beaufort County concealed or otherwise. And whereas at any moment, one or more Beaufort County employees lives, lives, could be placed in great jeopardy by wrongful, purposeful intent of the deranged individual to kill their fellow man. And whereas the Second Amendment provides for the lawful protection of our republic's citizens by ensuring that they may keep and bear arms when they, at the sole, at their sole and well-considered discretion, know that they or other innocents are or will be violently threatened by those of evil intent. And whereas while the Beaufort County's government employees will be lawfully permitted to conceal carry, Beaufort County's manager, and this is something we need to probably talk about and change, will be further charged to devise additional safety guidelines for said employees. Those guidelines to be given final approval by the Beaufort County Commissioners in open session. And whereas those government buildings that qualify for our government employees to conceal carry are all Beaufort County government buildings, excepting those government buildings not covered by the resolution, which are the Beaufort County Courthouse, the campus of Beaufort County Community College, all campuses within the Beaufort County school system. And whereas through the accurate prism of perfect hindsight, we have collected data that definitely states that the greatest protection that a lawful gun owner and those good citizens closest to them will ever enjoy is the weapon that they carry for the constitutionally, excuse me, the constitutionally protected purpose of their self-defense and the defense of others. Therefore, let it be unequivocally resolved that the Beaufort County Commissioners support and defend the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and are hereby greatly resolved to allow concealed carry privileges for all qualified and approved Beaufort County government employees in many of Beaufort County's government buildings. Okay? Anybody want to speak?
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion if nobody else wants to do that. Anybody else wants to make a motion?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Redholtz.
Stan, and the last time we voted on this, we included in the buildings that weren't going to be allowed was DSS, because they came in and made a passionate plea.
No, I didn't, I didn't agree with that.
Yeah, we did.
DSS wanted it.
No, they didn't.
People there working.
They didn't want it. They didn't want it.
That's not all the employees, tell me personally.
I'm talking, I'm, look.
I'm, I'm just asking. You included it, you included it last time.
I don't remember that. I do remember, I do remember specifically that I, that we talked to the manager, and the manager, we first set this up with the manager to make some guidelines and plans, and I think the manager came back to us and said, "Listen, these guys are licensed. I don't think I said anything I had to do. Am I not right?"
Oh, I don't think we ever got that far. The board never, you never went that far.
Yeah, but I, I think you don't want to be above all that, do you? I mean, we're broaching this again after many, many, many months.
I would say.
I think I, I'm, I'm going too far here by putting you in the middle of this, and you can withdraw if you wish.
The manager has to, if this passes, the manager has to provide rules. He can get them from any place he wants. There's a bunch of counties that have got this.
My suggestion to you would be that you get the county attorney involved, because it needs to be a solid legally appropriate ordinance or resolution, and we can certainly look at our neighboring counties. I know Pitt County has been through a similar piece. If that's the desire of the board, I mean, I know that, I think Pitt County surveyed their employees. I think they came back and made some adjustments, and so, I mean, if that's, if that's the direction the board wants to go, we're certainly glad to do that. I would caution you that this is not something that happened, that would need to happen tonight based on a resolution, and tomorrow be open for, for weapons.
I'm in full agreement with that. This is just the first step.
Any other comments? Commissioner Walker.
That was my question, is, I was called about this today, and they said that Pitt County has had this for some time and had, for, as far as they know, has had no incidents of even anybody doing anything. Does anybody know if that's true or not? I mean, I don't, I don't know either. So, anyway.
Think the adage is, and it goes without saying, it's, it's better to have a gun and not need it than need a gun and not have it.
All right, we'll, we'll call it a question. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes, four two.
So, give me some direction in what you're looking for us to do, because what I heard was, I mean, tell me the next step from up, for, for me as the county manager. Do you want me to start putting some stuff together? Do you want me to reach out to Pitt County? I mean, because otherwise, based on this, it sounds like to me tomorrow you can walk in with your firearm. Okay?
No, this is all pending the approval of whatever you present.
Okay. I just want to be clear in what the next step is for us.
No, it's pending tomorrow.
Okay.
Since we're not taking that manager piece out of this, I think it has it in here that you'll bring stuff back to the entire board. Okay?
And, okay, your next item, Stan.
This is fairly short, I'm going to read it. Earlier, I spoke to, we were talking about COVID and about how the governor seeked emergency control powers to do a lot in this state, and he had no statutory authority to do so, and he did it while the General Assembly was out of session. Now, the way the Constitution provides for the General Assembly to be called back into session, the governor can call them back in session, or they can call themselves back into session with a 60% vote. Plus, you got, they got to have the President pro temp, he's got to be in favor of it, and Speaker of the House has got to be in favor of it. In a politically charged environment, which we have here in North Carolina, as well as all around the nation now, it's going to be real hard to get 60% of the vote. Now, the only way you can change this is to change the Constitution by amendment. What this resolution asks is that we see that there is a need that there be the General Assembly in session at critical points in time in governing years such as 2020, I mean, 2020, which was a crazy year. I mean, think about it. We held an unconstitutional election in North Carolina by virtue of the general statutes not being followed by the State Board of Election, and they did it because they, they had a consent decree, a number of them. Some of them got overturned by federal courts, but eventually, we ended up not counting votes for another 12, 13 days after the election. That's an unconstitutional election. Now, it didn't really affect the presidential vote, it may have affected some other votes, but that's a problem, the General Assembly could not call themselves back into session and rein in that governor. Now, as you all know, I'm, I'm a big advocate of free and fair elections. I know that's not popular with some of you, but I am a great advocate of that. And if we're going to be able to do this right, we're going to have to change the North Carolina Constitution. The General Assembly has got to start that process, and then, talking about referendum, we all vote on it. You know, we're going to have voter ID starting in the next election. Why? Because it's in, it's in the state constitution, it's made it through the courts, it is proper to do. Okay? That's the way it works. So, I've explained this to you, I'm going to read the, the resolution. Resolution, "Support of the General Assembly initiating a referendum for a North Carolina constitutional amendment allowing self-recall by simple majority vote. Whereas, whereas an estimable year of damage was done to our constitutional republic by the polarization of COVID and the people and small businesses of North Carolina who were damaged by the tyranny of bad and unresponsive governing. And whereas a COVID-induced election of 2020 was a Petri dish of employing authoritarian control to the exclusive legislated general statutes, an ongoing experiment in frightening the people into relaxing their constitutional guard so that a coordinated effort could exist to sway the general election of 2020 in favor of the democratic socialists seeking their peace of the promised power grab where free and fair elections were far from the constitutional concern. Whereas, the, the North Carolina Constitution provides for the recalling of the NC General Assembly by Article 2, Section 11, but makes it too difficult in a politically charged environment to bring the General Assembly back into session to legislate and be watchful as is necessary if and when the executive branch goes completely rogue in administering elections irrespective of the North Carolina Constitution and North Carolina general statute regarding election law as exhibited in the general election of 2020. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Beaufort County Commissioners do hereby beg our North Carolina legislators to enact legislation to write a NC constitutional amendment and set an election for an addendum to constitutionally change how legislators can recall themselves into session by a simple majority vote." Now, think about it. Let's say we had a Republican governor, a Republican-
Let's say we had a Republican governor, a Republican Attorney General that did the things they did, which in many states, they would get them impeached. What if we had Republicans? And then we had a Democratic majority in the House and the Senate? Wouldn't you want them to be able to recall themselves back into session to stop the Republican executive branch from doing what the Democratic executive branch did? Now, I didn't talk about COVID so terribly much, but that happened before all this. This was not a good year for North Carolina governing. It was a bad year. And this needs to change. And they can do it in the General Assembly now by setting, within the Constitution, an amendment that would allow for themselves to be recalled by a simple majority vote.
Is that your motion?
That's it.
Care to say?
I'm going to second it because it is even-handed, it applies equally to one way or the other.
Any further?
Yeah, I'm going to second it because it is even-handed, it applies one way or the other.
Any further discussion from any other commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All opposed? It's a wash.
Our next item is a closed session. We have a word. Moving to the floor. It's closed, next.
A motion is needed to go into closed sessions under NCGS 14331811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. And also, under 143318111, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes.
So moved.
Care to second?
Aye.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Six zero, we're in closed session.
Well, ready to have a public work. Now, there's more, I mean, our speech. Now, motion to adjourn. We're back.
We're back out of our closed session. And as a result of the closed session, we will have no further action. We'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.